Mr. Mayor, we are live.
Great. So today is January 20th, 2021, and it is 7:31. And at this point, I am calling to order the meeting. And I believe that we have Pastor Flores here to open up with an invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Yo quiero leer en Salmos capítulo 143 del ciclo 10 dice: Enséñame a hacer tu voluntad porque tú eres mi Dios. Tu buen espíritu me guía a tierra de rectitud. Let us pray. God, we thank you today for the opportunity you've given us to worship you and to serve your people. On this inauguration day, we are grateful, God, for the transitions, Lord, that take place in our lives. And we thank you, God, that you ultimately are the God of all. We thank you for our mayor. And even in our own transition as a city, we thank you for our council and those that carry the burden and responsibility, Lord, of leading us into peaceful and tranquil lives, Lord. Help us, God, as citizens, Lord, to be respectful of one another, to bring value and worth to each other, to be part of solutions, God, that bring about your will. We pray for those, Lord, families who suffer, especially those who have suffered loss of lives. We're mindful, God, that in this dark season, we need comfort, we need healing, Lord. Help, Lord, in this grieving process. We thank you, Lord, and we pray for your strength and your renewal today. May you renew your wisdom within us, God. And thank you, Father, for the privilege you've given us to be citizens of Baldwin Park. In the wonderful name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. At this point, we move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Damian, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure, no problem. Everybody please stand. Wherever you stand, please stand. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
To every father to which it stands, one nation, with God, indivisible, and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Damian. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Manuel Estrada?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Alejandro Avila?
Here.
Councilmember Daniel Damian?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
And Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Present.
Great. And the city attorney, if there's anything to report from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have not concluded our closed session, so we probably will not report out now.
Great. And then announcements, council members are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening. And each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. And then at this point, we move over to proclamations, commendations, and presentations. And I believe first in line is our reelected and elected school board members who are here with us today. Is that correct? And I believe we have a board member Lucero, and then board member Hernandez, and board member De Ziv.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for having us.
Of course, of course. And, you know, a big congratulations. And of course, Mayor Pro Tem, you know, she's the one that invited you guys, so I'm not going to take credit for that. So, you know, kudos to her. And then, of course, congratulations to you guys. We are all very excited. I'm excited. You know, there's a lot to take care of, and you guys have a big responsibility. But I am well aware and I am confident that you guys will, that you all will, you know, take care of what needs to be taken care of. Councilmembers, I'm sorry, councilmembers, if you have any comments for our members of the school district?
Yes, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Avila.
I want to congratulate you, first of all, Ms. Lucero, for being reelected to the school board member, to the school board. I know you've done an amazing job throughout the years, and you will continue to do so. Ms. Diana De Ziv, you were a board member before, so I welcome you back. I'm very happy that you got elected again, even though there was a little space in between, but now you're back with us. I don't know that board member Hernandez is here, but I want to congratulate him as well. And the whole school board, because they have been doing an amazing job, being that I work for the school district. I know the tough decisions you guys are making at this time for the students as well as for the staff. And I know it's very difficult because you are divided, you know. What do I do for the children that's going to benefit? And then you have the staff that you need to worry about. So it's really tough what you're doing, but I commend you. And I know you will continue to move forward and make the best decisions for the staff, myself, and for all the families here in Baldwin Park. So, welcome. And I know you're not giving up on our community, and you will continue to work for us. Thank you again. And I look forward to working with you as a city. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for that, Mayor Pro Tem. Any other council members wishing to make a comment?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to, I'd just like to take this time to congratulate school board president Christina Lucero, school board members Diana De Ziv and Santos Hernandez for their reelections and elections to the school board. Just want to echo what Vice Mayor Alejandro Avila said. I'm really looking forward to continue to work with you guys now at an official capacity, really looking forward to joint projects in the future. I can't wait to start setting up those two plus two plus two meetings so that we can start collaborating and getting to work. Congratulations once again.
Yeah. Any other council members?
Yes, if I may, Ms. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Once again, congratulations to all the members on the board, some new and some old, and some with quite a bit of experience. You know, again, I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you. You know, school board president Lucero, you know, you know that I bug you and text you, and it goes vice versa. So I'm excited to, you know, continue that ongoing badger. And of course, with, you know, the reelection again of Mr. Santos, you know, I wish he would be here because he always has something witty to say. And again, you know, congratulations, once again, to Ms. Miranda Dives for, you know, coming back on board, literally. And, you know, I have no doubts, you know, we'll be all collectively moving forward for all of our community and your students. And more importantly, making sure that more students graduate and, more importantly, move on to higher education or other careers that provide them all the opportunities and, more importantly, give them the ability to seek their dreams. You know, without a doubt, you guys have a heavy lift on your side and on your shoulders. But I have no doubts, you know, you'll all be able to do that collectively with your entire board. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I can just say a few words?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
So, just, I wanted to, you know, thank our voters that they've entrusted us to make decisions for our students and our community. As a board, we're excited to work in collaboration with the city officials. And I think as long as we remember when making decisions, as long as we keep our residents and students as our priority and the forefront of our decision-making, I'm sure we're going to do great things together. And finally, just thank you for the collaboration with the COVID drive-through testing at Sierra Vista High School. So, for residents who don't know, that'll continue through January 29th, Tuesday through Friday, 9 to 3. And for more information, you can go to the Baldwin Park website to sign up for an appointment. So, thank you.
Yes. And by all means, any other school board members at this point? Would you have any comments?
I just wanted to say again, Mr. Mayor, thank you to yourself and everyone on the city council. We have worked on various projects in the past and will continue to do so in the future. Everyone has been committed to do the best by our community, and I can't wait to see what we can accomplish together. As Ms. Miranda De Ziv said, you know, we're appreciative of working together with you on the COVID drive-through. I hope that's just the beginning. And I will tell residents, it is not painful. Please, you know, make an appointment, get tested. COVID is real. It's out there. And the best thing we can do is to protect each other, is to know whether we have it or not, so that we can isolate. And I just want to again, thank you for welcoming the school district into this meeting and also working with us to serve our community. Because honestly, anything we do as a school district, you're doing the same thing for the city. And it's working together that's going to get us through this. So I thank you.
Yeah, by all means. And, you know, I'm very excited to have you ladies here and congratulate you, of course, you know. I don't believe there's any reason to wish you luck. You didn't need luck to get here, and you won't need luck to get you through it, right? You guys are skilled, and you're all doing what you're doing, and you know what you're doing. And so, and just for the record, I'm not only going to bug you as a mayor, I'm going to bug you as a parent, right? So, you're going to hear from me. But, you know, I'm excited. I know that there's a lot of potential for what we can do, especially now for our communities, for our children. And together, I know that we will make a great effort to combat socioeconomic barriers and things that affect our families. So, congratulations and thank you for being with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. I also want to congratulate the recently elected and reelected members of the school board. And want to thank you for the joint partnership on the city's initial test site. And then now this recent partnership on the second test site. And just look forward to the continued partnership with the school district. So, congrats again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
This is City Clerk Garcia. I also wanted to say congratulations to the newly and reelected board members. I've had the pleasure of knowing Christina Lucero for several years, when my kids were students at Foster Elementary School. And I appreciate her because she was very encouraging to me as to be a leader there in the school site council and representing the children of Foster Elementary School. And we've been wonderful friends since then, and I want to thank her for that. And you guys produce wonderful Bruins, if I may add. I know there's a Trojan. But I've always appreciated what the school district has done for our community, for our children. My two kids went through Baldwin Park schools, and they did wonderful. And they're now, you know, professionals. And, well, one is a professional working as a nurse. And so, it really is, it speaks volumes to the dedication and commitment that school board members place here in the city of Baldwin Park. So, thank you, ladies. And please, thank you to also Santos Hernandez. I know he's not online, but thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does any other, any other members of the council or city staff have any comments? No? Okay. You know, for the record, I'm a little sad that Santos isn't here. You know, who doesn't know Santos? Santos took me to school once, not because I was in trouble, because I was late. So, you know, but I were here virtually giving him a certificate, small world. But, you know, thank you for being here. Congratulations. As I said, all of us here in the council look forward to working with you and making sure we make big changes here in Baldwin Park. I believe, and I believe the next recognition is of Baldwin Park Unified School District products. Nick and Anthony, who earned full-on scholarships to University of Las Vegas. Is that correct? Can anybody confirm that they're on the call with us?
Mark, are they on with us? So, Mayor, we did send them certificates. It sounds like they may not be here, but if you just wanted to recognize them, that would be fine.
Yeah, of course. I think they've done something amazing. It's two football players from Sierra Vista High School, which, of course, I'm an alumni of, so.
Yay.
Yeah, there you go.
Mayor, yeah, I used one, I used two. They're probably-
Oh, okay. Are they here? I think they're on mute. If they're here, they gotta mute themselves so we can hear them.
Yeah, they need to mute themselves.
I think they're like commenting, but I'm not entirely sure. I don't know if you can look out for that, Mark.
No, we're not. Okay.
Oh, okay. Those are the wrong you. But, of course, you know, they've accomplished something, something I think is amazing. They've earned the scholarships. And they're both out of the service, the high school football team. And so, a big congratulations to them. I'm excited for them, and I'm sure the community is as well, and the school district and service to high school. And at this point, we move over to recognize Foothill Unity Center, which I believe we have Ms. Betty McWilliams here to represent them. Is that correct? I believe you're on mute, by the way.
Yes, I'm here. We're extremely honored to receive this recognition. I'm the executive director of Foothill Unity Center. And we look forward to a real long partnership and collaboration for all the residents of Baldwin Park, along with you all.
Great. And I know that, you know-
I have my certificate.
There it is. Okay, I forgot to ask the other members that we were recognizing if their certificates made it to their mail. And I know this was Councilmember Damian, you know, who brought up Foothill Unity Center. So, Councilmember Damian, I don't know if you have any words, and you want to take the floor?
Yes, definitely. So, Mrs. Betty McWilliams, first of all, welcome. I brought this because I cherish the valuable work that you guys do, not only for our community, but for communities all around the San Gabriel Valley. If you guys don't know about Foothill Unity Center, I mean, they go above and beyond, especially right now during our pandemic. They've helped numerous families, some of our seniors, they, you know, help with our community center. They, I mean, they have a list from going back to school, supplies to food banks, they have a pet food bank. They've got support in crisis services, health services. I mean, the list goes on. But, Mrs. McWilliams, I just want to thank you very much from the bottom of my heart for everything that you do. Like I said, not only for our community, but for other communities in need. And I look forward to continuing our partnership in the future. And we're here at your service. So if anything that we can collaborate with you, I would be more than happy to do so.
That's true for us as well. We're here to serve all the citizens of Baldwin Park and the surrounding communities. And it is our job to help those that are in need, but to also help those that are in need to give. So, we're here for the whole community, and it makes a healthier community when we all work together. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course. Did any other council members or city staff have any comments?
I just want to thank Ms. McWilliams for the work that you're doing for our community. And it's finally, it's nice to put a face to your name. So, nice to meet you. Thank you for everything you do.
Yes. Yeah, and of course, oh, yeah, who was that? I didn't see.
Mayor Cruz Baca.
Oh, hey. Yeah, did you have some comments to make?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the city of Baldwin Park. I'm on the board of Foothill Unity. I have the privilege and I'm proud to be a part of the board, and that's why I'm on today. Because I can't stress enough how much, and I know that Councilmember Damian already mentioned it, all the outreach that Foothill Unity does for our community and surrounding communities. And I want to thank everyone who donates to us and helps us be a part of what we do, and we will continue. And with the leadership of Betty McWilliams and the staff is unbelievable. When COVID is over, I invite you to please come and take a tour of our facility so that you can see exactly what we do and what we have available and how everyone walks away really happy and proud that we can do that for them. So, thank you. Thank you very much for the recognition.
Yes. I didn't know you were on the, I didn't know you were on the board or on the call. I'm sorry about that. They didn't, they didn't, it wasn't on here. So, I'll blame somebody else for that, right? But, you know, I'm glad to see that.
That's all right.
Glad to see that Cruz Baca is still involved in the community and making an effort. And of course, Ms. McWilliams and her organization, you know, as we go through these turbulent times and we go through this, you know, there's going to be a question now, there's going to be a question tomorrow, there's going to be a question 10 years from now, right? And that's how much could we have done for our community and how much did we do, right? And I know that through these efforts, you know, Ms. McWilliams and Cruz Baca and their organization are going to have solid answers for the rest of their life. And that's something to be proud of. So, congratulations and thank you for making the efforts in our community.
And thank you. Thanks again, Betty.
Thank you.
And I believe now we're moving on to a presentation about flavored tobacco vaping and the impact on Baldwin Park youth.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Dalila Lopez, and I'm here with my colleague Christina Cardenas from the LSC Medical Center Foundation, funded by the Tobacco Control Program, a program through the LA County Department of Public Health. That was a lot. As well as colleagues in the USC School of Medicine and members of Breath Free Baldwin Park to present to you on flavored tobacco vaping and its impact on Baldwin Park youth. This presentation that we have right now has been condensed, but you do have the full presentation in the package that we sent previous to this meeting. And I now invite Dr. Jessica Barrington-Primmis from USC School of Medicine to speak.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me here. As mentioned, my name is Jessica Barrington-Primmis, and I'm an assistant professor of preventive medicine at USC. Next slide. So, I wanted to make two points to you. First, that youth continue to use e-cigarettes at very high rates. They prefer flavored e-cigarettes. They're easily able to purchase e-cigarettes, especially in brick and mortar stores. And they do so frequently, most commonly at vape shops. And then, two, sorry, I went back, that local regulation really has the potential to change the story regarding the epidemic of vaping among young people. Next. Next slide. And so, as you, sorry, back one. I'm not controlling the slides. I'm sorry about this. So, just a brief overview, as I'm sure many of you are aware, that youth e-cigarette use has really increased a lot over the last decade. Most recently, in 2020, even in the midst of a pandemic, about one in five high school students reported using an e-cigarette in the past 30 days. Next slide. There are a lot of reasons why youth use e-cigarettes, but flavors is really a main one. We've done a few different studies that have found that flavors are really one of the key reasons why youth are using e-cigarettes. These results are from a study that looked to try and figure out where kids are getting these products from. Youth, of course, are under age, the age for legal purchase of tobacco in California is 21. But many, many youth are easily able to access these products. This study found that about 75% of youth reported purchasing Juul flavor pods in a physical retail location, 52% from a social source, and only 6% on the internet. This really tells us that there's an important role for local policy, right? Stuff like purchasing products on the internet is not, local policy isn't going to be able to fix that problem. But since the majority of kids are purchasing from a physical retail location, local policy efforts really have, can make a difference here. Next slide. This was a study done in California a couple of years ago, really looking to try and figure out how, again, how kids were getting access to these products. They went into different types of retailers with young people between 18 and 20. And in sort of these sting operations at many stores across California. What they found was quite surprising, and you can click next. So, in tobacco and vape shops, for purchasing of vaping products, 50% of these young people, their ID was not checked. And 45% of young people were able to purchase a product, even though they were under the age of 21, from a tobacco and vape shop. Tobacco or vape shop. Again, this points to the role of local policy. And so, let's talk a little bit about what those options are. So, as I mentioned, regulation really has the potential to change the story regarding this epidemic of vaping. There are a lot of different policy options, some of which Baldwin Park has already instituted, including having a tobacco retail license. Some policies that have been used historically, setting a minimum price, pairing minimum price with minimum package size, prohibiting the redemption of coupons, discounts, and promotions. And of course, which is most relevant to young people and vaping these days, prohibiting the use of flavored tobacco products. So, there may be some confusion about flavors. The FDA in January of last year finalized an enforcement policy that prohibited the sale of flavored cartridge-based e-cigarettes that appealed to children in all flavors except for menthol and tobacco. But there was a lot that this, that this policy didn't cover. I mean, you can go to the next slide. So, products like Juul were included in that regulation and are no longer allowed in any flavor other than menthol or tobacco. But there were notable holes in this presentation and things like puff bar, other flavored e-liquids, sorin or products that use like refillable solutions, or those that included an attachment that you add on top of a Juul to get a flavor, were not included. Okay? So, I'm going to go ahead and stop there with just one comment that in this study that we did, we really found that youth living in jurisdictions with strong enforcement were less likely to use e-cigarettes and cigarettes. And so, with that, if there are any questions, I'm happy to take questions.
Good evening, Yamingran. Being the daughter of an alcoholic father has certainly impacted my view on alcohol and drug addiction. In 2016, my father was arrested for drinking while driving home from work and received a DUI. He was put in jail. My family was worried that he didn't return home that night until he called us from his cell the next morning. Our worry for my father rooted from the fact that he was our main source of income. And if anything were to happen to him, we would be on the streets. Luckily, he was released from jail but received mandatory community service, a breathalyzer installed in his car as punishment, and was required to attend DUI school. My father drank even more to get rid of the added stress. The punishment's only worsened his alcoholism, not helped combat it. The lack of rehabilitation and social programs dedicated to help people overcome substance abuse has greatly impacted youth. Before the pandemic, I knew a school band member that had a vape pen in his pocket. And another band member that was a freshman saw it and asked me if she could take a hit. I immediately told her no, and that she would be loopy once practice started. Her eyes would be red. It'd be easy to notice that she was high. Then I got into an argument with a band member that had the vape pen about whether vaping was beneficial or not. I will say that he brought up one point that I agreed with. He said, even if you tell the band director or the principal or any other adult in the school, nothing would be done. He was right. Nothing would be done. Nothing would be done to help people like him that are victims of vaping. As of now, if students are caught vaping, they are sent to the assistant principal's office and are suspended. No referrals to the mental health services, no access to programs that would help them learn how harmful vaping is to one's health, nothing. Punishment and suspension. Going back to the band member with the vape pen, he told me the reason why he started vaping was because he suffered from depression. For him, vaping was his escape from his family troubles, from school, from everything. His vape pen served as a therapist that he could go to. Unfortunately, there are many more school band members that vaped, naming it the grasslot behind the BP baseball field before band practice to smoke and not get caught by a band director. I remember people having red eyes, laughing hysterically for no reason, and just being zoned out during band practice. Even on a regular school day, students would vape in the school restrooms, and the smell of vape would stay. People had entered those restrooms, they would walk in, smell the odor, walk out with a headache. There are students in the Baldwin Park community like that band member with the vape pen who suffer with mental health disorders, especially in the midst of the coronavirus pandemic, and are not given any help when they are begging for it through their pain, only punishment in return. Although vaping tobacco is a cause for concern, we must also keep in mind that research has identified it as a step towards cannabis use for some high-risk youth. There are no programs or resources to help youth combat drug addiction in the city of Baldwin Park. Baldwin Park City Council, you are aware of the substance abuse problem our youth face in the vaping epidemic. But what will you do to resolve the issue and allow Baldwin Park to breathe free? Thank you. Now, I would like to introduce my fellow classmates.
Good afternoon, City Council. For as long as I can remember, I've dreamed of being a singer. I've had dreams where I stand in a huge stadium and sing to a sold-out audience. My brother was always there to motivate me to pursue my passions. He was one of my biggest cheerleaders and never discouraged me to give up. Because of how much he's motivated me to overcome my fears, I never thought he'd become an obstacle to jeopardize my music career. My brother vaped. From what I remember, he started vaping around his senior year of high school. For about three years, everything was fine, and his new interest in vaping never affected me. When I became a sophomore in high school, I started to get very serious in music. Three years of band and a whole lifetime of singing under my belt, I wanted to take my talents to the next level. So, I signed up for my school's talent show to prove to myself that I have a shot to pursue my dreams. My brother offered me a ride to rehearsal. In the car, my voice started to feel raspy. I tried singing, but I just felt strange. It was a tough day of rehearsal, to say the least. At this point, I started having doubts about performing. My confidence went from sky high to plummeting down to earth. I ultimately decided I was being too overdramatic, so I gave my voice a rest for about a week. That weekend, I decided to spend my Saturday volunteering at Barnes Park. My friends told me Breath Free Baldwin Park was coming to explain the negative effects of vaping and e-cigarettes. In these sorts of presentations, I often zoned off, disinterested, wanting to go home. This time, it really caught my attention. I was looking at the pictures in their pamphlets and PowerPoints and realized that they're talking about the very same products my brother uses. But they explained that secondhand smoke from vaping is entirely possible. All the pieces came together. All of a sudden- All of a sudden, my brother, my role model, my biggest fan, best friend, the one who can be passionate in music, someone I knew with utter confidence but never hurt me, now became the very roadblock that stopped me from achieving my musical goals. At that point, I saw my brother as a betrayer. How's, how can someone so close, such an integral part of my support group, be something that's keeping me from doing the very thing I love? For me, music is something very close to home, and when I imagined life without it, it made me very emotional. The thought that there was a big possibility I would never be able to sing again never made me so heartbroken. It was only thanks to resources like Breathe Free Balden Park that I was able to put two and two together. Without that presentation that Saturday, I may have not been able to sing at that talent show or possibly talk with you today. Teen access to vaping products shouldn't be permitted in Balden Park for this reason. There are young people out there trying so hard to get at their dreams, to become a singer, or a teacher, or a sports star. And little do they know that one pod can get you hooked, knocking the chances of pursuing your dreams like that. My voice shouldn't be used for just singing or making songs. My voice, for as long as I have it, will be used to tell the story that dreams are at stake if we don't act now. And I'd be damned if I think I'd let someone take my dreams away from me. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Christina Cardenas, and I'm a program manager with LAC USC Medical Center Foundation. We wanted to thank you for your time. I wanted to also share that this evening, we have heard from residents, youth, and local experts about vaping. That's been deemed as an epidemic by the US Surgeon General. This impact, this epidemic is impacting communities across the United States and across the world. Vaping in direct contact with secondhand smoke is affecting students across Balden Park, regardless of race, income, gender, or if they're actually smoking. We'd like to thank the Breathe Free Balden Park Coalition that has presented this evening, also our partners at LAC Department of Public Health, American Lung Association, USC CAC School of Medicine, and the Public Health Law and Policy, which are all available as a resource to the city of Balden Park to provide technical, technical assistance, as well as to provide educational tools and resources to combat vaping through decreased access to products as well as education. We look forward to working with you. Uh, we are here this evening for questions and answers, um, to kind of look into solutions, uh, local solutions to address this epidemic. So we'd like to now, um, entertain any questions. Um, as Dalila mentioned, we did condense our presentation. We also provided a, um, resource packet for you all with, uh, information, including model policies, um, information related to, um, education and programs that have been used, um, in other jurisdictions, um, notably El Monte, um, Pasadena, that have, uh, been able to leverage this issue and, and create creative solutions, working alongside the community. So just wanted to thank you for your time, and it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. And, and thank you for the presentation. I mean, it's very, it's an important issue, and of course, you know, taking care of, of our, our community and making sure that we, we, we have our children grow up strong and healthy is important. Um, I don't know if any council members have any questions or concerns.
Mayor.
Mayor.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank, uh, our presenters today on this very important topic. And I would actually welcome, um, the opportunity to have a, a more in-depth conversation about the policies and, um, you know, do something in, in close, I mean, I'm sorry, in our study session format, um, so that we can look at what other cities are doing, and so that we can review also the city's policies uh, with regard to smoking and how we can incorporate additional policies when it comes to vaping. So I would really welcome the opportunity to have a further discussion on this in, um, the study session format.
Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Protemavila.
Yes, thank you. Um, I want to thank, uh, the speakers for being so brave and telling us your stories and the impact that it has made on your, in your life. Um, I think this is a good opportunity to collaborate with this district because, uh, working in a school district, I have worked at, at the junior high level, and I understand the, the challenges the students go through, and a lot of times, um, believe it or not, staff does not know these, um, these things are going on in schools. So maybe collaborate with the school district to see how we could prevent, um, students from, from smoking in school or bringing this items on campus, and also providing the mental health services that they need for these specific reasons. I have worked in the discipline department, and, and there is a lot of discipline being done. You're right, they do suspend you. But I think we do need more of the mental health and, and look into the reason why are these teens vaping? Why are they drinking? It goes beyond the, the vaping. So I think working in collaboration with the school district, uh, as we mentioned before, that we want to work together as a community. This is a good topic, a great topic to bring, and I know right now the students are not coming to campus, but maybe have virtual presentations for the students, um, and once they do come back on campus, have presentations at the schools so that you can present this, and a lot of students will know that they're not alone, because a lot of the kids think, oh, I'm alone in this. There's nobody I can talk to. They don't understand. But, um, let's work together with the school district, district to bring solutions, uh, so that we don't have so many students telling us these stories like we just heard from the youth one and youth two that, that they're going to, that as adults, we're, we're not aware of it. And, and we need to make sure we understand and know the signs to see, well, what are we looking for? What, how do we know when there's a, a teen having trouble, and, and what do we do about it? So I think this is a good opportunity to collaborate with the school district, as well as providing new guidelines on what we could do as a city. Thank you.
Yes. Um, any other council members?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Um, first and foremost, I want to thank, uh, Christina Cardenas. Um, you know, we've been part of, uh, this group with the Breathe Free Ball and Park. I think it was maybe October or even a month before that. Uh, I can't remember. It's, it's kind of almost, uh, been amazed. Uh, but this is the reason for why I asked them to, you know, prepare and, and present to the council. Um, because I had no doubt that the council would want to, you know, follow up on the review of our policies, uh, to make it much more difficult, but also provide the resources, uh, for the youth to be able to have an exit ramp, or more importantly, never be able to get onto the ramp of, uh, these e-cigarettes, at least in our city. And I think we can certainly, there is a law that's already passed at the state level, but we can certainly augment that as we have with other policies, um, similar to what El Monte has done, if I remember correctly, uh, that will make it much more difficult. But also provide a little bit more, uh, responsibility onto, uh, you know, the, uh, retailers in our city. Um, and there's ways of, you know, rolling, rolling something like this where we eliminate, uh, e-cigarettes, uh, or more importantly, I think more importantly, it would be the, the flavored e-cigarettes and their accessories, uh, in our city. Uh, you know, there's other mechanisms in which people can get them, if that's what they desire for the adults. Uh, you know, as an adult, you can do which, as you choose. Uh, but as a, as a youth, uh, I think we certainly have to provide, uh, some challenges and roadblocks and barriers for them to access some of these items, uh, within our own retail. Uh, what they didn't share or, uh, a slide that, that kind of skipped through is, you know, members of the community, our own, you know, friends and folks that we know, uh, went out and did a survey, you know, of our community. I believe there are several hundred folks that they've, uh, you know, interviewed and so forth. And that was the result of, you know, uh, an issue that is being driven at the local level and has been brought up to, you know, our attention. Um, and that's, you know, that's what good policy and good government is, uh, you know, collaboration of everything. So, you know, as Councilmember Garcia said, is, you know, uh, I would welcome, um, this to be brought back at, uh, our study session so we can look at really what the, the changes that we can look at our own, uh, ordinances, um, that we have that exist along with, you know, other best practices in the San Diego Valley or even at the state level. Um, and in regards to the, uh, you know, resources for students, uh, it sounds like that could be bifurcated and also be, uh, a good agenda eyes item for the two plus two plus two, uh, so we can move in various parallel tracks, um, for this. Uh, I certainly want to recognize Ashley, um, Valdez and Vanessa Poke. Uh, these are students, uh, from the group, and of course, of course, Sochi, uh, who's very active in our community, uh, for taking a big role uh, in this initiative and in this, uh, project. Um, I have no doubt that the, their efforts, uh, will result in change, um, given, you know, some of the sentiments, uh, that I've already heard from my colleagues. Um, so I welcome to see you all soon, uh, perhaps, and then, you know, sometime in February or in early March, we can schedule that, um, as a, as our, uh, agenda, uh, allows. So thank you again, everyone.
Thank you. Any other council members, uh, looking to make a comment? No? Um, so, you know, and, and.
Hi, hello?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, um, I'm youth two, but I just want to ask a question kind of directly, not just towards like city council members, but towards, um, everyone here this evening. Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, um, good evening. Um, this is, um, a question I'm shooting towards everyone here on the call this evening. Um, I'm sure a few days ago, um, the city council have received emails, calls, or voice messages concerning a scholarship. So just to kind of shed light on that, um, a peer of our class named Veronica Sanchez, she unfortunately passed away early last year of a high fever. Um, she was someone who took rigorous, rigorous classes, and she always did her best to serve her community. And she had big dreams early in her life, and she knew where she wanted to go and what she wanted to do right outside of high school. But it was just such a tragedy to think that someone like her with such big dreams didn't get a chance to pursue them. So to kind of keep her legacy alive, we started this scholarship called the Veronica Sanchez Memorial Scholarship. This will be a $500 annual scholarship that will go towards a senior in Balden Park High School. This money is going to be used, um, to fund their journey towards post-secondary education, which was a dream that Veronica had, but never happened, unfortunately. So if any of you would be interested in donating to the cause, it would be greatly appreciated. Um, and if you aren't able to financially contribute, that is also fine. At least, the least that we ask is to just spread the word of the scholarship, because every dollar helps a student gets closer towards post-secondary education. And, um, that's, that's it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, yes, of course. And, and I, I, um, you know, before we, we moved on, I, I wanted to commend the youth for, you know, obviously, sometimes sharing your story and putting yourself out there isn't, isn't easy and, but most important of all, by putting yourself in vulnerable situations, you've made, you've made people aware of what's going on. And, and, and most importantly, that a lot of people are not alone, right? And so I, I commend you for, 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 for taking initiative and, and doing something about the, these issues and these issues that are important to you. And of course, you've also touched on a very important topic, and that's mental health, right? And, and we know that mental health is, uh, is something that, that sometimes disproportionately affects communities like ours, immigrants, people of color, the youth, people who are struggling. Um, so by all means, I, you know, I, I think it's clear that, that the council agrees that we have to work on this and, and, and the issues that, that it comes with, right? And so, you know, thank you for being here, and, and also thank you for being involved in that. I, I did see that email. Thank you for being involved and, and making sure that, that your colleagues are going to be able to have, uh, access to scholarships and, and grants and funds. So by all means, youth number two, you are doing some great things.
Thank you so much, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here this evening. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. We're both, um, in charge of the scholarship, so we appreciate coming on down here and speaking to everybody. Thank you.
Yes, youth one and youth two, by all means. You guys are, are doing great things. Um, I don't know if, uh, Ms. Cardenas or any of her team had any other comments?
Just wanted to echo our team, you know, we, um, this is, this is a personal issue, and I think for, for all of us that are involved, we are inspired, we are motivated, um, in this new year to really look at how to invent, how to support our youth. And, um, I, um, look forward to working with you all, and I, uh, I'd like to thank Mr. Hernandez as well for your leadership and, and really your support in, um, with the coalition, and, uh, we do look forward to coming back to, uh, to, uh, study session, coming back to council as well to really kind of discuss in detail a little more what we've learned, uh, from other model policies and communities. So thank you for your time. We appreciate everything.
Yes, thank you. And then, of course, you know, thank you for, for spearheading this effort, especially in our city. Um, you know, we thank you all for your time and, and for your, for your presentation. I believe at this point, we can move on to, uh, uh, the waste management presentation with.
And Mayor, just so you know, I made some notes, and we will gather more information, bring this back, uh, to another study session in, uh, February.
Great. We look, I, I'm sure all of the council look forward to that, to that. Thank you. Thank you, Shannon. Yeah, and I believe we're, we're, uh, going on with, uh, Terry Muse and the Waste Management Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and community members. My name is Terry Muse, and I'm the Waste Management Public Sector Representative for Baldwin Park. I am here tonight to give you an update on the bi-weekly green waste and recycling schedule we have implemented due to COVID-19 staffing shortages, and do my best to answer any questions that are posed. First of all, I want to sincerely apologize for the inconvenience this has caused you. I know it seems like everything has changed since COVID, and the one thing that hadn't changed throughout these past nine months is your trash pickup. Please know that this was a last resort measure to ensure that all trash is picked up weekly. I'm hoping when you hear why we had to make this adjustment, you will understand and bear with us through this challenging time. Since March 2020, when stay-at-home orders and quarantines took effect, there's been a huge increase in the amount of waste residents have disposed. Just think about how much more your household trash has increased. I know mine has increased significantly. We are buying more groceries to cook at home and getting takeout like never before, which is generating a huge increase in single-serve containers and packaging. Our online ordering has skyrocketed, generating more cardboard and packaging materials. A lot of us are working from home and disposing of all the trash that we used to leave at the office in our residential containers. And who would have thought the disposable PPE and sanitizing wipes were things we would be disposing of in large quantities until now? And finally, since we were stuck at home, we took advantage of the situation to clean out our garages and closets, or do our deepest spring cleaning ever. Unfortunately, after we did those cleanouts, we found out the thrift stores were not accepting donations, and yard sales were not allowed. So many of us either threw those items away or scheduled a bulky item pick at the waste management. Since COVID, Baldwin Park residents have requested an additional 3,691 bulky item pickups compared to the year before. All in all, since the pandemic hit, Baldwin Park residents have generated nearly seven million more pounds of trash so far during COVID than they did the year before for the same period. That's equal to 166 football fields of waste stretched end zone to end zone. I'm sorry, back at the impact, impacts of COVID on workforce slide. There you go. Thank you. We have gone to great lengths to ensure we have a COVID-free workplace, following all the CDC guidelines. Each employee must complete a health assessment on a mobile app before starting work. If they have tested positive, have symptoms, or have been in close contact with someone who has tested positive in the last 14 days, they cannot come to work. They must quarantine for 10 days or get a doctor's note to return sooner. As you can imagine, it is extremely difficult to manage an operation when any employee who goes out will most likely be gone for almost two weeks. We've also reconfigured our entire facility to avoid any opportunity for employees to gather in groups. We sanitize each truck and the entire building each night as an extra precaution. In spite of all these safety precautions, we still fell victim to the Christmas surge that happened all across LA County. Up until Christmas, we were struggling with staffing, but we were able to shift drivers from commercial to residential and borrow drivers from other waste management sites. However, in December, COVID hit all of our sites hard, and there were no employees to spare. And every day, the number of employees that are absent changes. One employee may come back from quarantine, and two more employees may go out on quarantine. Drivers have shown up to work only to hear from a family member that someone in the house has tested positive, so the driver has to leave his route to go on quarantine. It changes day by day, hour by hour. And I also want you to know that many of our employees live in Baldwin Park or grew up in Baldwin Park and have families still here. So what we are experiencing, these effects of COVID, is, is that exactly what the Baldwin Park community is experiencing. With the amount of trash and bulky items increasing dramatically, our workforce has been stretched to its limits. Our drivers were already working 12 to 13-hour days and giving up vacations to be able to pick up all the extra trash and bulky items generated by the residents. When our employees began to actually be affected by COVID, we knew we could no longer pick up all this extra trash with. When our employees began to actually be affected by COVID, we knew we could no longer pick up all this extra trash with less employees. Just to give an example of how hard COVID nineteen has hit us, in November, we had only twelve absences. But in December, we had a hundred and twenty-five absences, and eighty percent of those absences happened the last two weeks of December. Next slide, please. We adopted the biweekly recycling and green waste schedule to keep the city in compliance with the Cal Recycle State mandates for diversion requirements. Along with making sure trash is serviced each week. Also, the biweekly pickup of recycling and green waste freed up those drivers to fill in for the open trash routes, so all trash will be picked up without fail. Other trash haulers have discontinued bulky item pickups, are rolling over trash pickup to other days than normal service days. Or are mixing trash, recycling, and green waste into one pickup, which does not provide the city the diversion credit they need. We are not doing any of those things. Your trash service is not affected. We are still picking up bulky items. We did not reduce the amount of green waste and recycling that you can dispose of. We are just asking you to hold any excess over from week to week in bags or bundles and put it out at the designated week for pickup. Your service levels have not changed. They may, they have remained the same. At the end of the month, we will have picked up all you put out for pickup. I just want to quickly go over the schedule for the remainder of January, and please note this schedule is until further notice. We really cannot predict when things will go back to normal, since no one can predict when this pandemic will get under control. But as you can see on the schedule, this week is trash and green waste. Next week will be trash and recycling. Any extra bags of green waste or recycling that you have, you can place next to your cart, and we'll pick it up with by the recycler or green waste driver. We realize that all our educational materials has asked you not to put recyclables in plastic bags. However, these are not normal times. Our recycling facility is working extra hard to sort out all that reaches the facility. We hope and pray this temporary schedule doesn't go beyond January, but again, we do not know. When it will go back to normal. We take pride in providing excellent service to you, and I hope the fifty years of quality service we have provided is not overshadowed. By this temporary situation due to a pandemic. People have asked, will we go back to normal schedule? And all that is dependent on how this next surge affects us. We are continuing to monitor the staffing situation, and when we have a healthy, stable workforce, we can resume weekly pickup of green waste and recycling. We are meeting weekly with city staff to give them an update on our staffing and to resolve any issues that may come up. Believe me, we do not want to continue the schedule one day longer than we have to. Next slide. As soon as we knew we had to move to biweekly green waste and recycling pickup, we work with the city to develop a plan of action to notify customers of this change. We create a social media post and distribute widely starting on Christmas Eve. We activate our customer service notification system on December twenty-eighth to contact customers by text, email, or phone. We posted the biweekly schedule on the city and WM websites. But we know we need to do better. So we're sending out a postcard shortly to reinforce the weekly customer service notifications you will receive from us. And even with all these communication tools in place, we ran into some major technical difficulties. We started hearing that customers were not getting notifications, and we researched it. We found our customer service notification sister system that had always been our most effective and quickest way to notify our customers had a glitch. Texts and emails were going going out fine, but not the phone call option. That has been fixed, and everyone now who chooses to be notified by landline should be receiving those calls by now. Another issue we face is during the first two weeks of this temporary schedule, our customer service call center was over capacity. WM sites all over Southern California were also implementing a COVID temporary schedule, so our call center experienced more calls than it can handle. The capacity of our call centers, eight thousand calls at a time, but we were receiving twelve thousand calls at a time. So the system was overloaded, placing people on long holds and in some cases disconnecting them because the system was simply at capacity. And just like everywhere else, our call center was also experiencing a staffing shortage due to COVID. I know this was a major frustration from customers who did not receive the phone notification and then tried to call us and were unable to get through. And I sincerely apologize. We promise to do better. Our local San Diego Valley team has been working closely with the city to make sure any residents that contact City Hall with an issue has that issue resolved expediently. I want to make sure I let everyone know that there are other ways you can't reach us, though. And you can do that through our website, which is linked to the Baldwin Park website. Or you can email our customer service center at cslos angeles@wm.com. You can also download the My WM app, and you can manage your account, get service alerts, and even check on the location of your driver. And also, I want to please ask, if your phone number or email address has changed, contact us so we can update our records. This will ensure that you receive all important service alerts. Last slide. Many customers have asked for a refund or credit due to this temporary modified schedule. We can understand why someone may think one is due. However, while there may be delays in your recycling and green waste service. There has been no reduction to the amount of material we are collecting or service we are providing. We're still collecting all material that you put out for pickup, including all the extra trash and bulky items you are generating during this pandemic. Our rates are priced per month, not per service, and include all amenities such as unlimited bulky item pickup every week. Extra bag pickup, holiday treat pickup, and sharps containers. You pay the same monthly rate whether we service you four weeks or five weeks in a month. All the services included in your monthly rate are still being provided. I realize there was also confusion about the rate increase that was applied to your January bill. This is our yearly cost of living increase as provided per our contract. Normally, this increases effective July first of each year, but it was delayed until January first of this year. You will see the regular monthly rate in a retroactive PI line one. Instead of applying the six months that were owed from July to January in one bill. We spread that six months payment into six payments or three bi-monthly bills. You will see that retroactive PI in your next two bills, and then July it will be removed. I know it couldn't have been worse timing to have the yearly price increase at the same time the temporary COVID schedule was put in place. But with COVID, there seems to never be a good time for change. I hope I've answered your questions. Once again, we sincerely apologize for the inconvenience we have caused these past few weeks. As we all know, the county of Los Angeles has three times the number of cases than other jurisdictions in the state of California. Sally today was reported that cases reached over a million with over fourteen thousand one hundred and twenty-two deaths. COVID has shown to be unprejudiced, deadly, and unlike almost anything that we have experienced or will experience in our lifetime. We appreciate your patience and understanding as we go through these challenging times together. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight.
Great. Uh, thank you for that presentation. Council members, do you have any questions or concerns to share with uh Terry Muse?
Yes, Mayor, I actually do have a couple of uh concerns, only because I've received numerous calls. And complaints about the biweekly and how a lot of the residents have. Had no idea that it was happening. And what I've noticed over the last couple of weeks is. Uh, a lot of the either uh gray cans or the green cans have been left out in the street, you know, for the entire week. Because they were taken out on the wrong date that they were supposed to be done. Um, and I completely understand, you know, what, you know, Terry, thank you so much for that information, and I completely understand, you know, COVID is. Something that was unpredictable, and none of us were expecting that. But you know, one of the things that I would have probably considered, uh, and I understand that there is a contract and there's a yearly annual increase uh in that. Uh, but one of the things that might have probably kind of made it to where, okay, residents, let's come down here, let's work together here. Is maybe a postponed that increase uh because of the pandemic. You know, a lot of families uh are struggling, you know, exactly for the points that you made. People are working from home, children are home. You know, everybody's ordering, you know, from Amazon and all these other companies, so there's a lot more boxes and a lot more of that, so. They're having to store that into their home for an extra two weeks uh because of the, you know, alternating the uh the pickup. But maybe one of the things that we could have done was said, hey, you know, let's try to figure this out, work it out, and maybe postpone. This yearly increase because of the COVID, just the way we understand that you guys are short-staffed, maybe say, hey, you know what? You know, I understand we're short-staffed. I understand that there's a lot of residents who are struggling with, uh, you know, unemployment, so forth and so on. So why don't we make a deal and you know what? We'll do the, you know, every two-week pickup. But you know, what we'll do for you guys is we'll not increase for this year. You know, we'll increase it next year once, you know, we're all back to some type of normality. Uh, that was just one of my concerns, only because, like you mentioned, there were a lot of angry residents, and I know that you guys did send out information. Unfortunately. Some people just don't get it for, you know, some, you know, one reason or another. Uh, but that was just, you know, my suggestion, maybe. Something would have been done where it it might have been uh fair to have just said, okay, let's just postpone that annual increase because of the COVID pandemic. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there, is there any other uh comments from any other council members?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Uh, Terry, just uh while we have, you know, the residents and the rest of the council here, can you just again remind us the discount and uh for seniors? And what uh needs to occur? Because I believe that's still available for uh our residents.
Yes, the senior discount is available to anyone who is sixty-two years or older. They can apply. We have the application either on our website, the the Waste Management website, I believe it's on the city website. And um they were being able to take it to the senior center, which I know is now closed, or to. Second floor, which I'm much sure is open all the time. So people can take a picture of that application. And they can email it to us, or they can scan it. And all we need to have is their driver's license that just shows their age, and then they receive the discount.
Perfect. Can you just share what that discount was? I I don't, I don't think, uh, I missed it.
It's a thirty percent discount off the rates.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Great. Any other council members uh have any comments or questions? No, um, you know, I and I, I I think, um, you know, I I understand the council member Damian's concerns. I I too got. Kind of emails and and uh I was reached out to by by uh by our residents and. You know, um, you know, I I would want to make sure that, of course, residents are are understanding what's going on and that there's uh clear and and good communication between. Uh, you know, the provider and and the consumer, especially during these times, right? You know, so by all means, I I know you said that you were going to send a postcard, so uh. You know, it'd be nice just to make sure that it's in at least two languages so that people are are able to read it or understand what's going on and. And that way they can, they can better prepare for this as as well. Um, you know, and I I kind of agree, uh, you know, I I share. Councilmember Damian's sentiments, right? It's a, it's a, it's, we're we're going through rough times and, you know. As cost of living goes up, unfortunately, a lot of the, a lot of our residents are. Are are not even meeting what they were, you know, a couple of months prior. So by all means, I I I hope that the. That, you know, the provider and the consumer can can work something out and and, you know, uh, create a better sense of communication.
Uh, Mayor Estrada, I wanted to point out that the postcard is going to be in Spanish and in Chinese. So um it will be able to be hopefully, um, you know, communicated to all residents. And, you know, we do know we failed those first two weeks, our system failed us in communication, and so we are working as hard as we can to. Get this message out, and if anybody has any ideas of um other ways that we can communicate this besides what we're doing. Please, by all means, let me know. Um, my email is t m u s e at wm.com. I welcome any suggestions, ideas on how we can get the word out better.
Yes, of course, you know, and of course, you know, every every bump in the road is always an opportunity to better our 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 services and and the way we do things, so. Uh, you know, thank you for for coming on and and presenting. I know that this is a uh, it's been an issue for residents, and I and I and I'm sure that they are, you know, glad to hear and. You know, get a better understanding, at least a uh perspective from from the waste management uh point of view.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Council uh Mayor Protemavila.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Terry, for coming on and and explaining to us and letting us know what's going on. I I too have received phone calls and and concerns in regard to the rate increases as well as. The trash not being picked up, but I also understand um that you are short-staffed. I think. A lot of companies are are having that problem, but as residents being unemployed. And not being able to make ends meet, it's also frustrating for them to know that. You know, although it may not be a big increase, it it makes an impact in their family. And the fact that the trash is not being picked up, I too have seen a lot of trash bins that were left out from last week. I actually put out the. Recycling bin on the wrong week. So, so I understand the frustration in the residents, and at the same time, I want to thank the staff from. That's that's out there. They're working uh constantly. They're actually, you know, they're lucky to have a job at the same time. They're they're putting their life on the line to make sure that. That we're getting services here in the city of Baldwin Park. But just keep that in mind, like. Mr. Damian said and Mayor Estrada said, um, the communication process, I can't think of another way that. At this time that that you can send up the communication, but um. Things will happen, and it's something unprecedented that we didn't plan for, of course, and you had to make adjustments. In your company, just like all the other companies, but do thank your employees for everything that they're doing out there. It doesn't go unnoticed. They're, they are essential workers. And it's not easy for them to be working with this pandemic. That's all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there any other comments um from any other council member or city staff?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Uh, Terry, thank you for the report to council. I was confused. And I I think a lot of people were confused as far as the the schedule and what was happening. So thank you for the communication to council, and I would um. Just ask that, you know, any way that we can avoid further confusion. That would be greatly appreciated. Um, just to be very clear about what the schedule will be. For what is the anticipated timeframe? Do we know?
You know, we don't know. It's it's pretty much week by week. January, the absences were, well, we haven't finished January, but we're still trending the same. So we're just, you know, monitoring it week by week and meeting with with city staff every week. Because um, you know, the the last thing that we want to do is to go back to a normal schedule and have a surge and then go back, have to go back to, you know, a a modified schedule, so we're. We're just trying to make it, you know, week by week to to figure it out. Like I said, you know, this has been really difficult and confusing for us too, and. We don't want to do this any longer than we have to, so we are definitely, as soon as we're able to to go back to normal with that, with the recycling and greenways, we will.
Okay, so that's good to know, and. Yeah, I think, uh, you know, as the communication, as you pointed out, is key, and um. If we have any city channels where we can just share that the message, disseminate the information. Obviously, we don't want to, we don't want to put it in a newsletter that's going to come out a couple of months from now, and then it's going to, you know, just cause more confusion, so. If there's any other uh. Outlet that, you know, communication outlet that we can consider. But uh, yeah, it definitely is on waste management. I mean, the the brunt of it is on waste management to communicate to. The residents and uh in different languages and just to reduce any any confusion. And I would join my council colleagues in in asking if waste management would consider any concessions. Just because it is such a unique time, um, you know, and in partnership and in good faith, I think the city is. Trying to understand and accommodate, and so we would ask the same from waste management. For our, on behalf of our residents, so, you know. If you can go back and and share this and message and this information with your executive executives and. If there's any possibility. You know, to give some concessions to the city, we would appreciate that as well. Just given the unique circumstances and the unique time that we're living in. So that's all I have to say, but I know that waste management has been a great partner and. You know, you've you've done a great job consistently. The times call for. Modification, adjustment. I understand that City Hall is doing the same. But you know, if there is an opportunity to work in partnership and do a little give and take, then I would support that as well. So, thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, any other, any other comments from city staff or or city council? No, so uh, once again, thank you to Terry Muse for for presenting and uh, you know, offering that communication here at the council. Of course, we always look forward to, you know, working with 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 waste management, and of course, our residents and and making sure that we can all come out of this together. Um, at this moment, we move on to public communications. Uh, city clerk, is there anybody looking to? City clerk, is there anybody looking to make a public comment?
Yes, hi, Mayor. We do have a few requests to speak and I'm going to defer to our deputy city clerk.
The city clerk, Christian, thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Chris Venegas. And let me try him now.
Hello?
Hi, is this Chris?
Yes.
Hi, Chris. This is Emmanuel. There's a mayor of Baldwin Park. I am calling you regarding your, your request to make a public comment. You have three minutes, okay?
Okay, great.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Hello?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is, yeah, my name is Christopher Venegas. I'm a resident of Baldwin Park. And I'm calling you to, um, complaining about the, the trash company. They've done things where us as the citizens have not known, where they started taking trash less now. They don't take it as much, as many times as they used to. But yet our prices have gone up. They don't let us know ahead of time. So like, not only myself, but my neighbors and other citizens, they are taking out the trash cans and they've been left there for the whole week that's on the site. And Waste Management has not told us nothing. I feel like we're in a monopoly with them that we have no choice but to go with them and pay whatever prices that they charge us. And I think maybe there should be another way where we could find another trash company or someone to service our city, if possible. And speaking with other neighbors and all that, it's the same thing, you know, it's just that it, it's just been unbearable with them. They don't, they're, you know, things do the job right. If they drop trash, they just leave it there. It's just been an ongoing battle with them. So I, I just don't know what else to say to that. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comment, Chris. You know, city council will always consider the comments of the residents. Chief Deputy City Clerk, do we have any, who else do we have?
Next caller is Carlos Dominguez. Let me try him now.
Hello?
Hi, is this Carlos?
Yes, this is Carlos.
Hi, Carlos. This is Emmanuel Estrada, mayor of Baldwin Park. I believe you requested to make a comment?
Yes, I did.
All right, go ahead. You have three minutes, okay?
Okay, yeah, calling about, uh, I just came to find out that you guys have voted for, to rename the, the city chambers hall or facility. Emmanuel Lozano, you guys, you guys voted for it and now you guys put it on hold. I just want to let you guys know, Emmanuel did a lot of things for the city. I've been a resident for 51 years. When I was growing up, the city was nothing. They brought in the day laws, Walmart, Target, and the skate park, the senior center, the park. He brought a lot of things in. I don't understand why you guys put it on hold. It's almost like a slap in the face. He did a lot of things for the city of Baldwin Park. And I hope you guys, it's like, uh, I hope they reconsider. And he did a lot for the city and it's like a slap in the face to him that, that's the least we can do. I, I felt safe when he was the mayor. I hope I feel safe when you're, when you're continuing to be mayor. But that's all I wanted to say is so we can reconsider putting Manuel, Manuel's name on the city chambers facility.
Great, thank you for your comment. Consider it.
So much. Congratulations on the election.
Thank you, thank you. Chief Deputy City Clerk, who is next?
Catherine, I'm sorry, Catherine Lozier from the city library.
Hi, this is Catherine.
Hi, Catherine. This is Emmanuel Estrada, mayor of Baldwin Park. I believe you made a request to make some comments during public communication.
Yes, please. Well, good evening again, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, community partners and fellow committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As mentioned, my name is Catherine Lozier and I'm the community library manager of the Baldwin Park Library. Tonight, I wanted to speak about the LA County Library's virtual programming. For families with preschoolers, the library continues to offer virtual storytimes Monday through Thursday at 11:00 a.m. Past or previous storytimes can be viewed on the LA County Library Facebook page. And then for families with school-aged children and teens, the library is now offering a series called Parent Aid When Life Gives You Distance Learning. It's a virtual program series on topics related to the challenges of parenting and caregiving during this time with students' digital learning. And topics include how to use library resources to support distance learning, managing and tracking a student's schoolwork, ways to help students stay focused and on task, how to help, or how to support students and help them support themselves. And the programs are offered every Wednesday each week at 4:00 p.m. in English and at 5:00 p.m. in Spanish on the same topic. And the next program will be on Wednesday, January 27th, on the topic of working as a team with strategies and tips on how to, how parents can work with their students, families, their families, teachers and other educators to best advocate for their child's educational success. And then in addition, the library has virtual programming for adults on the topics of books and stories, hobbies and DIY, health and wellness, arts and entertainment, work and career. And we have cultural programming from the libraries for cultural resource centers as well. And then the next program with that will be tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. on the chemistry of baking substitutions for baking cakes. And that's for those who want to try something different or want to learn what to do if you find yourself missing an ingredient, which I know happens right now, especially with the pandemic. So for those who'd like more information on any of the programs or any library service, please visit L A county library dot org or call the Baldwin Park Library at six two six nine six two six nine four seven. I'm there Monday through Friday and I'm, I'm always ready for a phone call. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you for that. And of course, you know, it's important that we, that we stay active and find things to do. And I think the library is always a great resource. And I, if there's anything, I think maybe Manny and, and the, the team at Parks and Recs can, can, you know, note that on our social media. Chief Deputy City Clerk, who is next?
We have Mr. Luis Mendez.
This is Luis.
Hi, Luis. This is Emmanuel Estrada, mayor of Baldwin Park. I'm calling you because you made a request to speak during our public communications and you have three minutes, okay?
Okay, first of all, good evening, everybody. I'm calling in regards to, on your agenda, item number five on the calendar. And that's the naming of the, the city facility. It stated that staff recommended reversing the name of the city, of the city council chamber from Mayor Emmanuel Lozano council chamber. I would just like to know why would the staff recommend to reverse something that was already voted on? I mean, is, are you guys going to be doing this, vote on something? And then two weeks later, change your mind and, I mean, vote against it? I'm just baffled by this. This is the type of leadership that Baldwin Park is offering now? It's, I'm just baffled by this. On December 16th, council member Avila placed the agenda to be reversed. There are a few things that were noted. Council member Avila, why does suddenly need to reverse a vote? Can that be explained to me? If you were in such a disagreement, why, why would it be named? Why would, why, why did you vote for it? And why didn't you vote no at the beginning? Is it because of new leadership that you're going by that? Or I'm just, I'm, it's just, is this going to be happening in the city of Baldwin Park now? I'm in the process of purchasing a house in Baldwin Park. I love Baldwin Park. Baldwin Park's a beautiful city. And if this is the type of leadership now that we're getting, it's, I'm just baffled by it. What's different now? What's different now from three weeks ago, two months, a month ago to now? Is it because of the COVID-19 or are we to a new year, new thoughts? I'm just, I'm just like, wow. It's just a really poor example on your part, Councilman, Councilmember Avila. I just suggest you keep the, keep to what you're saying. Keep to what you said. I just want good leadership. Stick to what you guys say and just do it. That's what, what makes Baldwin Park. You guys are our leaders and I expect nothing less from you guys. I don't want this to be happening over and over and over with things that are being brought up.
And thank you for that. Your time, your time is up. So thank you. And of course, this item, you know, it's on the agenda, so we will be discussing it. Chief Deputy City Clerk?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Thank you if you're hearing. Sorry about that. But thank you. Chief Deputy City Clerk, who is next?
The next caller is Mr. John Rios.
Please leave your message for six.
Do you want to try one more time?
Yes, Mayor.
Hello?
Mr. Rios, it is Emmanuel Estrada, mayor of Baldwin Park. I believe you made a request to make some public comments and you have three minutes, okay?
This is kind of a lady, isn't it?
Yeah, so it's a long meeting.
Okay.
But go ahead, whenever you're ready.
One of the things that the community has been coming by and talking to me, I'm like the middle man between the city hall and you guys. One of the things that we've been noticing that you guys haven't been doing anything, starting with the new, the lawyer, the CEO, personnel. You guys haven't been doing your jobs. You still have a cancer within the city and you guys can't get rid of it. So that's one of the things that, like the community right here in my area, Barnes area and North Park, they've been talking to me and telling me, why did we elect the mayor if they're not doing their jobs? They should have gotten rid of the lawyer, the CEO, Personnel Department and everything, start fresh. You guys need to put your pants on. That's one of the biggest things that's been happening in the community, the community. I'm like the advocate. I'm the one that they come to and they say, okay, okay, I'll talk to them and I'll let them know. Yet we elected you and other members of the city council to represent us, but you're not representing us. You still have that cancer inside the city hall. You guys need to start moving and doing things right. The community has been noticing everything that's happening. Another thing is the police department. We need to get somebody that knows how to run the police department. You know, maybe we need to get McCain back. He had promised the community that he would go start saving a million dollars a year. You guys haven't done anything in contrary to that, you know? We need to see action. We haven't seen no action from the new city council. You guys are dragging. You need to put your pants on and do your jobs. You need to listen to the community. We put you in office, we expect more results of what you guys are doing.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Rios. Your, your, your time is up. And of course, city council is hearing and we are taking everything into consideration. Chief Deputy City Clerk, who is next?
The next caller is Ms. Monique Torres.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic voice message system.
Do you want to try one more time, Chief Deputy City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic.
Maybe third time's a charm. One more time, Chief Deputy, please.
Sure.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic.
Any, who is next, Chief Deputy City Clerk?
Caller is Brenda Salceda.
Please leave your message for six two six.
You can, you can go ahead and try one more time, please.
Please leave your message for six.
Oh, okay. Maybe third time is a charm with this one. You can go ahead one more time.
Please leave your message for.
Okay, is there, is there, sorry, is there another caller, Chief Deputy?
Yes, we have Marta Alicia Mendozza.
Hello?
Hi, is this Alicia?
Yeah.
Hi, this is Mayor Estrada. I'm calling you from the city of Baldwin Park. I believe you made a request to speak during public communications. You have three minutes, okay?
Okay. Okay, yo, voy a hablar en español, okay?
Okay. Chief Deputy City Clerk, just, I believe you'll write this down and then translate it for us, correct?
Yes.
Great, okay, okay.
Okay. Buenas noches a todos. Quisiera yo saber por qué ahorita. Buenas noches a todos. Quisiera yo saber por qué ahorita tiene, tengo tres semanas viendo basura por donde quiera. Si te fijas en las entradas de los freeways y en las salidas de los freeways de Baldwin Park está sucias, okay? Hay demasiados homeless, demasiados. A mí no no sale a la calle, están haciendo del baño, están haciendo pipí. Okay, yo soy residente de Baldwin Park desde que yo tenía quince años. Y esta ciudad se estaba componiendo. Tengo tres semanas. Hay vandalismo. Me acaban de robar una parte de mi camioneta. No están cuidando. Qué es lo que están haciendo? Por qué está pasando todo esto? En lugar de estar, que si vamos a remover el nombre de Manuel Lozano y todo, que sí lo vamos a poner porque Avila dijo que sí y después dice que no. Okay? Yo quiero saber qué es lo que van a hacer porque esto, esta ciudad se está yendo para abajo. Está fea. Se está, se, hay basura por donde quiera. En los pastas está el montón de ropa, el montón de, de basura. Nadie, yo entiendo que la mejor es por el COVID, pero se van a otras ciudades y están limpias. Si me entienden, entonces digo yo, en lugar de andar peleando que si van a quitar el nombre de Manuel, lo van a poner. Mejor pónganse a, a limpiar la ciudad y a ver en qué nos pueden ayudar aquí en la ciudad. Porque hay mucho vandalismo, se están metiendo a robar. ¿Dónde está la seguridad? ¿Dónde? Aquí está un carro, tiene un, una semana y media parqueado, chocado. No han venido a verlo ni a recogerlo. Y eso es lo que yo quería decir, que en lugar que anden peleando, Avila y los que estén allí, que estén, que, que quieran sacar a Manuel Lozano. El señor trabajó más de veinte años a la ciudad. Y, y si él se merece eso, déselo. Allí está, ya se aprobó el, el día dos, ahora de una repente ya no lo quiere. Yo nomás quería hablar eso, que por favor cuiden la ciudad porque está, hay niños. En veces mejor me quiero quedar en la casa para no salir para afuera, debe de tan como está el cochinero. Si entras a los freeways, el montón de basuras, hay cauches, hay ropa, hay blankets, hay, hay, este es un cochinero. En las entradas y salidas de los freeways. Era todo lo que yo quería decir. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias, uh, señora Alicia, y obviamente, los miembros del concilio siempre toman toda en consideración. Uh, okay, sering, city, uh, Chief Deputy City Clerk, uh, who's next?
I, would you like that translated into English for?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, please, translate that for us.
Okay, good evening. Uh, so I am Alicia. I am, uh, here to ask now that why it's been three weeks that I've been noticing so much trash in the freeways, in the, uh, entrances and exits of the freeway. It's dirty. There's a lot more homeless people. Um, looks like they're using the bathroom and just doing pee where I can see them. I've been here fifteen years and I feel like the city is going down. There's so much vandalism. They stole part of my car. Um, and instead of complaining or going back and forth on this issue with naming the, um, the chambers after Manuel Lozano and being between yes and no, I want to know what you're gonna do for the city because I feel like it's going down. There's clothes, there's trash, maybe it's because of COVID, but I don't see this in other cities. So instead of fighting, why, why can't you clean the city? There's vandalism, there's, uh, thievery, and where is the security? So don't fight over Manuel Lozano, that man served twenty plus years. It's been approved. Now it's no longer approved, so I don't understand that, but please take care of the city. Um, there's couches, blankets on the freeway and we have children here and they deserve a clean city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the translation. Chief Deputy City Clerk, is there anybody else that's next?
Yes, Mayor, we have one last speaker. His name is Tom Sanlona.
Great, thank you.
Hello?
Hi, is this Tom?
Yes, it is.
Hi, Tom, this is Emmanuel Estrada, Mayor of Baldwin Park. I believe you made a request, uh, to speak during public comment and you have three minutes, okay?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. May I proceed?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, council mayors, uh, Mayor Estrada. Thank you, uh, for allowing me to submit my comment uh, on the agenda number five on naming the city council chambers in the name of Mayor Manuel Lozano. I am a thirty-year resident of Baldwin Park and recognize the amount of years Mayor Lozano has served our city and committed himself to serving as our great elected official. As long as I can remember, Mayor Lozano has been instrumental in leading our great city to what it is become today. He leaves behind a legacy of leadership, integrity, courage, loyalty, and a high ethical and civic-minded principle in all, in his deserving of this name recognition. And thank you for the opportunity to express my comments on this subject. Have a pleasant evening.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for, for expressing your, your concerns. Uh, Chief Deputy, was that all?
Yes, Mayor, that's all.
Great, so at this point, I move to close public communication and we move on to the consent calendar. Uh, um, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, I know your name was mentioned often. Did you want to wait till we, uh, till somebody moved this item out of the consent calendar to make comment?
Yes, I'll wait for the item. Thank you.
Great. Is there any items that we are looking to move out of the, to pick out of? Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Sorry, oh, sorry, let me put the video. Is it possible we can, uh, make the, uh, the names of closures of, uh, sorry? If we can close in memory of, uh, some residents at this time?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. I just didn't want to get too late, um, cause, uh, folks will probably, uh, log off. I certainly want to recognize the, uh, Guillermo family. Um, over the last two weeks, they have lost, uh, three family members. Um, as of yesterday, they lost, uh, their, the patriarch in the family. Like I said, over the last two weeks, uh, there have been the deaths of three individuals, uh, in their family, all sisters, and this is as a result of COVID. Um, so my heart, uh, is, you know, with them and my prayers are with them, uh, during this very, very difficult time. Uh, cause as the daughter and the family were, um, mourning and celebrating the life of one of the aunts, uh, you know, literally a few hours later, uh, the mom had passed away in the hospital. So again, you know, what we're facing in the, with the pandemic that's happening, uh, it is, you know, it has been hitting home for quite some time. Um, but unfortunately now, uh, we're seeing a lot more of it. It's getting closer and closer to each and every one of them. So thank you again.
Great, thank you, thank you. Um, you know, and of course, it's, it's, it's a, it's devastating, you know, and the loss that, that people are facing right now. So by all means, I think I speak for all of our council members when I say that, you know, our condolences go out to those families. And I, and at this point, I will move on to the consent calendar. Is there any items that we are looking to?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia?
Uh, since we're taking the opportunity to close on behalf of, of members in our community, I wanted to close on behalf of Gonzalo Vázquez, who is a, um, longtime resident of our city and well-respected, uh, community leader in the, the soccer community. And unfortunately, we learned that he also passed away of COVID-19 and I wanted to give our deepest condolences to his family, uh, to his wife and, uh, to those who worked closely with him and shared the same passion of serving our community uh, when it came to, you know, s- sports and soccer programs for our youth. So I do want to say a few words about him. And it won't do justice for all of his contributions to our community, but he, uh, was the owner of Deportes Jalisco and again, very involved with the soccer community, especially the youth programs in our community. Um. He is, uh, survived by his wife, Rita Vázquez, their two daughters, uh, a son and six grandchildren. So, you know, he does have a, a large family and, uh, my heart goes out to them on, he's, you know, such a young, young individual and his passing came much too soon. And, um, you know, we offer our support in any way that, that we can. They became residents of the city as a couple in nineteen sixty-six. Um, so again, lifelong res, you know, long-term, long-time residents. Um, and they certainly leave their impression, or he leaves his impression in our community along with his family. Um, so, you know, giving our, our deepest condolences. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for that, Councilmember Garcia. And by all means, I, you know, uh, the Portes Jalisco is, is by all means, I, I think, a, a big icon, right? In downtown Baldwin Park, you know, who, who, who can't, who doesn't pass by there all the time and, you know, and I believe it was before that, it was on Ballpark Boulevard, correct? By the ninety-nine cent store, you know? So whether you went down Ballpark Boulevard or, or the other street, you know?
Ramona.
Yeah, Ramona, you wouldn't miss it. Yes, uh, Ms. Contreras. Uh, City Treasurer, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, were you gonna make a comment?
I can hear you. No, I was gonna make the comment, but Councilmember Garcia did it first. My condolences go to the family too. Thank you.
Of course, of course. Thank you. Um, is there, is there anybody else that we want to close on behalf of today?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I've, of, unfortunately, I have another, another one, um, another name to recognize. Uh, this is one of our colleague's, uh, father, Gilbert Rojas. Uh, we've recognized him at our veterans', uh, event. Uh, you know, not only as a father, but a past veteran. He passed last month also as a result of COVID. Um, our deepest, uh, prayers and, and many hugs, uh, for our, you know, one of our city staffers, uh, family members. Um, like I said, uh, this is getting closer and closer. Um, so, you know, we need to continue to, you know, uh, protect not only ourselves, but our friends and family by, you know, social distancing, but, um, I, I do hope that at some point, uh, you know, in the fall or, or sometime later this year, we could, uh, recognize and have, uh, special ceremony for all of the, um, all of our residents and family members that, that have passed, uh, with COVID, um, cause I'm hoping that will end shortly.
Yes, yes, of course.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, City Treasurer, go ahead.
Hey, now I, now I got turned on. I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate the new president of Valley County Water, David News, and the vice president, Jasmine Lopez. They just got, um, appointed to this position and I just want to wish them good luck.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for that and a big congratulations to them, you know? You know, some tough phrases. Um, okay, and is there anybody else that, that we're looking to close on, on behalf of? If not, we can move on to the consent calendar. And at this point, uh, city council members, is there any item that you are looking to pull from the consent calendar?
Mayor, I'd like to pull, uh, items number five and nine, please.
Okay, five and nine.
Mayor, I was gonna pull item five too, so after Ms., uh, Garcia speaks on it, I'd like to speak on it as well. And item number six, please.
Okay, um. Okay, so just to be sure, five, nine. Then, of course, we can pull, I think, item number six as well, just so we can kind of get an update on that.
Yes, that's the one I requested.
Okay, I didn't hear you. Sorry. So five, six, nine. And then I believe, uh, and then just, uh, I know that we talked about it, so maybe, uh, number eight, item number eight. So at this moment, I'll make a motion to pass consent calendar excluding items number five, six, eight, and nine. Uh, thank you. Any objections? No, seen none. So, uh, motion moves forward. Uh, at this point, we can start off with number five and I believe, uh, Councilmember Garcia brought it up, so she has the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just really quickly, I just wanted to ask if there, we could reconsider, uh, this item. Um, simply because I think that we have a, a mayor who really has contributed to the history of our city of Baldwin Park and it's not to take away from our newly elected mayor and I appreciate that. Even those who called in were very respectful and, and actually congratulating the new mayor, so I, I don't think it's coming from a, a bad place. Um, I think it's simply wanting to recognize the twenty-plus year contribution from Mayor Lozano and, and really that's gonna be part of our city's history. Um, whether we acknowledge it or not. And so I, I would like to keep the council chambers named in his, in his, you know, his name and legacy uh, because of the historical aspect of it. And I understand that we don't have a policy in place at the city. Um, we, it's never really come up in the past. Um, and just like, you know, the school board was able to name the field, uh, a field after one of their school board members who retired. Um, I would like the same, you know, recognition given to, to Mayor Lozano because of the, the historical footprint, you know, that he leaves in our city. And that's all. It's not to take away from the new mayor or the new council. Um, and it's all with, you know, much due respect. So that would be my request.
Okay, um, and I, I do, are you gonna, were you gonna make a motion or are we gonna wait for other comments?
I'm gonna wait for other comments.
Great. Uh, any other council members, uh, wishing to make a comment on this, on number five?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Mayor Protem Avi.
Okay, um, so the reason I brought this item back is I know there's been a lot of facilities named after different people and I think, I think we should honor those that have, have invested so much time of their life into our city. I think it's very important. I definitely agree. And I don't take away anything from what former Mayor Lozano did for the city. I just want to have something in place for future references and, and start now. This item was brought up, uh, with really, uh, last minute, with no consideration, no, no talks really between anybody, or at least I was not part of it. So I would like to, again, conduct a research, see what other cities do and, and have a policy in place so that when we name something, we have a policy in place and explain to, to our audience, to our community why it is we feel that, that, uh, a location should be named after somebody. And, um, as Ms. Garcia mentioned, um, you know, the school district did name a football field after Mr. White, but not before having meetings impairing input and ideas of, of what place they should name it or who they should name it after. So I would like to have the, a, a policy in place established on how we make these type of decisions for future references. Again, I'm not taking away anything from Mr. Mayor, uh, former Mayor Lozano, but I want to have something in place and give an opportunity for all of us to look at it and review and agree on it and, and have maybe community input to be part of this voting process where we're naming something because it will be part of the history. It will be part of Baldwin Park. And it's important that we all have input, not just council, because I can simply just say, hey, I want you to name something after me and I don't think it should be based, not that Mayor Lozano said that, no, but I don't want it to be just because I want something named after me. I think it should be a community effort, council, staff, community members that have input and ideas on what we should do or, or what kind of guides we should have for naming a facility after somebody. So with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion for us to, to do our research, set our policies and then consider whether, uh, the chambers is a good facility to name after the former mayor or is there another facility, uh, to name after him and have public input and have, uh, different people to make these decisions, just not council. So that is my motion. Um, thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Um, I think, you know, it's by all means, it, it's, you know, this, this conversation is obviously one that, that needs to be addressed. And of course, as, as, you know, the new mayor, I think it's important that I take a, uh, uh, obviously, I'm gonna vote on this. So it's important that people understand why I'm gonna vote the way I'm gonna vote. Uh, you know, I, I don't under, uh, I mean, there's a lot of things to this, right? And first and foremost, and I think the most important thing of all is that I don't believe city council should have made any decisions on December second. I went through the history. I went through the history of every swearing-in in Baldwin Park and there's not another swearing-in ceremony where the previous council makes a decision thirty, thirty minutes to an hour before they take off. Uh, I believe that the city council made, I believe that the city council setting dangerous precedent by doing so. Uh, I believe that the city council made, I believe that the city council setting dangerous precedent by doing so. And, and I, and I don't believe that, that, that's right. On a second note, uh, naming, you know, and, and, uh, Councilmember Garcia made a very good point. Uh, when, when the school district named the field after, uh, Mr. White, uh, he was retired. There's no term limits here. And by naming the city chambers after somebody, you've, you've, you've opened it up to political, uh, to politic and politi, politi, I can't even say it, but you've named, you've opened it up to politic. And I think that too is dangerous. Of course, you know, there's, there's gonna be talk and rumors. And by, by no means am I here to spite anybody or take anything away from anybody, without a doubt. Uh, former Mayor Lozano has a legacy. He's, you know, he's earned it. He's worked for it. And, you know, by all means, nobody can take that away. I don't believe that the city chambers should be named after anybody. Somebody can be here two years or 20 years, but not forever. And so my, my idea is that we should, by all means, we should recognize former Mayor Lozano. But we should be finding a different, uh, facility for this. So, uh, councilmembers, if you have any other comments to make, or else we can move to the motions.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, go on, Mr. Damian.
Thank, thank you. Uh, I actually, I, I echo your sentiments, uh, uh, Mayor. Uh, I believe that this was done unprecedented. It was done during our swearing-in, swearing-in ceremony. Um, and I like you, I've never seen business conducted and other swearing-in ceremony. Um, so I think that this was something that could have been passed the meeting before, if it was something that they really wanted to do. Um, I agree with you. We know, we thank Mayor Lozano, former Mayor Lozano, for his service, 20 years of service. I mean, you have to thank him for the time. I mean, regardless of how you feel, he invested his time to the city and we have to thank him for that. However, I agree with you. I don't think that we should be naming the chambers after anyone. I think the chambers should just be the council chambers. And if we want to recognize them by naming something after him, let's look for a different facility to do it. But I like you, I agree. You know, what happens if later on down the line, you want to, uh, run again? And then now you have something named after you. We're politicizing this. You know, so I think that we should not play politics with this. We should really sit down. Like I said, I think that we honestly should thank him and figure out another way to recognize him. But I agree with you. I don't think the council chamber should be named after anyone in particular, other than the Baldwin Park City Council Chambers. Um, so with that, I will move to second, uh, Alejandro, uh, Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor Avila's, uh, motion.
Mr. Mayor, I haven't had time to speak yet.
Great. Uh, go ahead, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Well, first and foremost, I don't understand why we need a motion when at the last couple of meetings, we've already instructed staff to bring this policy discussion back. So my question is, is really, why are we waiting to bring this policy back? Is there something going on that I'm not aware of? Um, because I've been eager to have the discussion, you know. Uh, you, you all have asked for this, so I'm asking now, when are we gonna have this discussion? Can we have this at the next council meeting or, you know, at the end of the month? Uh, because this is ridiculous. I mean, if we ask staff and we give them direction, then I expect that we're gonna be doing it. So there's no necessarily, I mean, there's no need for a motion when, you know, when the policy's already been adopted to ask staff to bring this back. So let's just, you know, let's just do this in February or whenever the next council meeting that we have, that's available for staff to properly prepare and have this, you know, these type of recommendations, and let's go from there. I mean, this is, this is, I mean, we're starting to just, this is how, when people say that government's not working, this is a prime example. So let's just bring the, the discussion item, agendize it as, as properly in our closed session, and we'll go from there.
Mayor, Mayor Beney?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Uh, Mr. Tafoya, uh, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, um, it was recommended that we put this on the agenda before we made any other decisions, and that's why it was brought to the agenda. Is that correct? Because it was not agenda-sized before?
Uh, yeah, I believe the council at the last meeting decided they wanted to put it on the agenda. That's correct.
Because we needed to have it on the agenda to, to, um, properly go through this, correct?
Uh, yes, if you want to reverse something, you have to put it on the agenda. But, um, you know, if that's what you want to do, but that was my understanding. The council wanted to do that.
Right, so that's what we're doing. We put it on the agenda, so then now we can have staff research the policy so that we can move forward. And then, once we have a policy in place, then we can look for a facility uh, that we can decide to name after.
Can I make a substitute motion, Mayor?
Uh, yeah, uh, go ahead. If there's no more comments.
So I.
Uh-huh.
Okay, thank you. So my, my motion would be to stay the decision that was made on December 2nd and bring back a policy for us to review and then make adjustments. And I think that would be, that could possibly be a win-win, um, just to stay the item, the motion, and the direction that was provided at that time. And then we can review the policy that staff will bring to us. And then we can make a firm decision at that point, whether to move forward with a different facility or no facility, or however that conversation takes place. So that would be my substitute motion.
Um, is there a second?
Second.
Is there an objection?
Objection.
Hey. Roll call, uh, roll called, uh, City Clerk, please.
Thank you. Yes, uh, Councilwoman Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Avila?
No.
Councilmember Damian?
Um, sorry, I need to get clarification. What was, uh, Councilmember Garcia's substitute motion?
Uh, my understanding of the motion, Councilman, uh, Damian, is that you're staying the naming of the council chambers, so there won't be any action taken on that. And then you would bring back, um, the, uh, policy in order to discuss the policy and figure out what you're going to do. That's my understanding of the motion.
Got it. Uh, no.
And Mayor, um, I'm sorry, uh, Mayor Stella?
Uh, no. Uh, you know, by all means, this is ridiculous. But I do want to make it clear that city council should have not made any decisions on December 2nd. You know, and, and I, and I, and if you think that you should have made a decision, by all means, now is the time because this item is on the agenda. I, the only other city I could find making decisions on December 2nd was El Monte. And they took a hit for it, and they undid their agenda, and they did things the right way. So, uh, by all means, uh, you know, keep that in mind, please. Uh, and I believe somebody made a motion. Who, who made the original motion?
I made the motion to, um, approve item number five.
Is there a second?
There was a second by Councilmember Damian?
Great. Objection.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I believe Councilmember, uh, Damian had a motion before Councilmember, after Councilmember Garcia, I mean, Avila's.
No, I actually moved to, uh, to second, uh, Vice Mayor Avila's.
Roger. Thank you.
Great. So is there any objections?
Yes.
Great. Roll call.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Protem Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Damian?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
No.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
No.
Mayor Emmanuel?
Yes.
So with that passage, Mr. Mayor, are we gonna be having the discussion in sometime in Janu, in February?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I, I hope city staff can just figure this out and, and we just do this the right way, you know. By all means, I, I stand by my, I, I, my decision is, is made, you know, from, 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 from long thinking and, and just, you know, trying to be genuine. And I, and I don't think that the decisions made on December 2nd were correct to do so. So.
Uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor, excuse me. Yes, uh, staff will gather some information. They've already, um, have some information from other cities regarding policies. We'll put that together, bring it back to you at a study session in the near future with some options.
Great. Thank you, Shannon. So at this moment, we move to item number six. And I think that has to do with, uh, the Tri-Cities Agreement. Um, I'm not sure who can give us an update on that.
That would be me, Mr. Mayor, Manuel Correo.
Great.
And I will go ahead and give a brief, uh, explanation of the staff report. In addition, I'd like to just inform the city council at the next city council meeting study session. Uh, we will provide a little bit more of a comprehensive, uh, report in regards to all the homelessness efforts because things are starting to line up. Uh, but the, the, uh, purpose of this report is to seek approval to enter into a service agreement between the city of Baldwin Park and Cohort Cities. Co, the Cohort Cities are a city of, uh, Almonte and South Almonte and Goodwill, Southern California Employment Service Provider for service planning area, SPA 3, which SPA 3 is the area that we belong to, uh, with a scope of work for the homeless employment service, not to exceed 27,000 under Measure 8 Cities Homeless Implementation Grant. Uh, there is no fiscal impact to the city. Uh, the grant is a reimbursable grant, and the city will cover the cost of the program in the amount of $27,000 and will, it will be reimbursed. Uh, and generally speaking, what the grant is going to do, it is going to focus on priority area number one. And area number two, area number one is increase the supply of supportive and in, interim housing for people experiencing homelessness and at a regional level, and enhance the availability of access to homeless services to prevent and combat homelessness, homelessness in the region. Specifically in Baldwin Park, there's, uh, well, there's items that Almonte are going to do. And South Almonte wanna remind the city council or, or inform them that the city of Baldwin Park is a lead agency in regards to this, uh, project. And Baldwin Park will coordinate local efforts to respond to home, homelessness, uh, help prevent individuals and families from becoming homeless, connect case management and services to the coordinated entry system, expand access to workforce development programs to increase employment, explore opportunities to increase the number of units and affordable housing. This concludes staff's presentation. If you have additional questions, I, uh, love to a, answer those. And I'd like to remind the city council that at the next city council meeting, we will have a little bit more of a comprehensive presentation of all of the different elements associated with our homelessness efforts. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there any, uh, comments or questions from councilmembers?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Question, um, Manny, I, I'll wait for the report, but I was just curious. Um, does this have to do with par, is it part of, uh, the shower system that we were going to provide here in Baldwin Park?
It's a, it's a different element. Uh, we'll talk a little bit more about all the different pieces that we have that are, that are lining up. It's really, it's really great to see the efforts that staff have, has put in over the last few years are, are starting to happen. So things don't happen overnight, but I'm happy to say the showers program will be in Baldwin Park probably within the next four to six weeks.
Great, and, and I just wanna thank you and your staff. I know you have been putting, you and your Rico and your whole staff have been putting a lot of work into this and, and planning. So I really appreciate you, uh, working and, and working with the other cities so we can help, uh, battle the homelessness problem. And I look forward to seeing the rest of the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Do you know who is, uh, who's providing the showers?
Uh, we, uh, I forgot the name. We had them at the, uh, a few meetings ago at the study session. Uh, Shower of Hope, I believe, is the agency, uh, providing the service. And then we will bring in some nonprofits, some wraparound services to assist. And we are also working on a food vendor to provide them, uh, a warm meal.
That's great. And I know, I know Shower of Hope does some really good things. I, I follow them. I know that they do things in Skid Row, and they're all over the county. So I, I think that's a great, it's great to know that we're gonna be in partnership with them.
Um, thank you very much.
Yeah, is there, is there any, uh, is there any other questions concerning this item? If not, uh, I'll make a motion to go ahead and, go ahead with this item.
Take it.
That, Mayor?
What was that? Was that Councilmember Damian?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Oh, thank you. Uh, any objections? No? So that passes, and we can move on to item number eight. And so I just wanted to bring this one up. Um, you know, I, I know that the first time we mentioned looking at how we can contract with, with local and, and nearby companies so that we can keep our workforce going and, and the money in our economy. Um, so I do, at the very least, I, I saw that, I, uh, I think it's a three-year contract. Is it correct? Uh, who is here? Is it, um, John?
Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor and, um, City Council. Happy New Year. Yes, this is a, a three-year contract with, uh, two one-year, uh, renewal.
Great. Um, is there any questions from any other councilmembers concerning, uh, regarding this item?
Uh, Mayor, if I could add, um, I don't remember the exact numbers, but as you know, Mariposa's based out of Irwindale, right next door to us. Uh, Irwindale City does not have a lot of residents. A, a very large percentage of the employees of Mariposa are actually residents of, uh, city Baldwin Park. I, I recall it was about one-third of the employees, maybe more. John, I'm not sure if you still have that number?
Uh, 28%.
28%, okay.
That's great. Would we be able to do this contract without the extensions?
Uh, so the, the, uh, extension has to go back to city council for approval.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it would come back to city council if they're doing a good job. You can roll it over. If not, you could ask staff to do another RFP.
That's fine. Can we, so would it be okay to make a motion? Can we, we can pass this contract? I know that they have a big, uh, labor force from, from our city, which is great. But in the meantime, I, I do want, uh, city, city staff to look into, uh, how we can educate our local business owners on how they can apply for these RFPs and these requests for proposals so that they get involved in, in, in these contracts. And also how we can, uh, cut these contracts smaller so that they're, they're more attainable for the smaller, the smaller, uh, mom and pop shops. Is that doable?
Um, yes, Mayor, actually, staff are kind of looking at and working on some ideas to create, um, sort of a vendor RFP list, um, to allow local vendors to, you know, to register, put their name on it. Um, and then when we have RFPs, uh, requests for services, um, they would be included in the mailing. They would be notified of, of that in the future.
Great. Is there any other, is there any questions from any other councilmembers at this point? No? At this point, I make a motion. We can, we can pass item number eight. Uh, any seconds?
Second.
Any objections? No? So we move on. And then we are at item number nine, and I believe that was brought up by Councilmember Damian.
Councilmember Garcia brought, uh, pulled that.
Oh, was it? I'm sorry about that. Councilmember Garcia.
That's okay. And I know that, I know Councilmember Damian, um, has, you know, taken the lead on this item. So I'll, I'll defer to, to you on this. But I did have some questions in terms of the timeframe. Um, and also, is there a goal of, like, a certain amount of um, engineer firms that we would like to have on the shortlist? Or I just wanted to know a little bit more about the timeframe and then kind of the process and then where, where we wanna, where we plan to land, if you could help me. If you could walk me through that a little bit more, either Councilman Damian or staff?
Yeah, sure. I'll, I'll go ahead and do it. Uh, Councilmember Garcia. So there's really no timeframe. I mean, we're not in no hurry. It's just something that, and honestly, I, I've had this conversation with, um, this particular engineering firm a couple of times. And the goal is not to remove them from our engineering list. The goal is just better business practice is best to always have at least two or three tops that we are always working with. Um, and again, you know, it's not that we're, that we're taking AE out of the equation. It's just that we want to add at least one or two other, uh, engineering firms, uh, to the scope of, of, of the engineering projects that we're, you know, we have in the city. Um, there is no timeframe. We're not in a hurry to, you know, rush this through. It's just, you know, a direction to staff to go out for RFP and get some, you know, other engineering firms to, uh, to send, to send them in.
Okay, and, um, so my question would be to staff, as far as how long does it normally take to go through the process?
John Mee, Shannon?
Thank you. Um, I'll let John talk a little bit about the details on the timeframe. Um, but, you know, I think once we review and once staff reviews the, the proposals that we get, they might have a better idea when they bring this back to you of how many firms they might want to recommend. It could be, it could be a shortlist of three to five firms, um, that we create. But again, it depends on their qualifications and, and the recommendation that we make to you. And John, can you kind of give us an update on the timeframe and when, when this might come back to city council?
Yes, absolutely. Um, so the timeframe for, to send out the RFP, it's recommended to be between two to four weeks. Uh, once we have the, um, proposals from consultants, um, we'll have an evaluation team to, uh, evaluate all the proposals. And we'll do the selections. and we'll do the selections based on the most qualified consultant. Usually after this, if interviews are deemed necessary for, you know, to select the consultants or multiple consultants, then we'll do this and then we'll present it to council. We have a target date starting if we wait to mail the RFP tomorrow. We will bring it back to council on first meeting in March.
Okay, so March. So you would bring back what exactly, I'm sorry, John, what would you bring back in the first meeting of March?
Oh, we would bring back the selected consultants or firms for City Council to consider and approve.
Okay, so right now, we are the end of January. So essentially, you could, you plan to turn this around in about six weeks?
Correct.
Okay. And is there, I wanted to ask Councilmember Damien, is there any, is there any thought, Councilmen, on maybe extending the timeframe a little bit just to vet the process a little bit more? What are your thoughts about that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have, I don't have an issue with the time. I mean, honestly, my biggest concern is I know that other cities have pre-approved prepared RFP lists because it's common practice. And it just keeps everything sharp. It keeps everything going. So I mean, like I said, I'm not in a hurry to get this done. We just want staff to start getting to work on it. We can have, you know, other companies already in the RFP list.
And if I could, if I could add, you know, the schedule that John's laid out is the ideal schedule and we will try to stick close to it. But, you know, in the real world, especially with COVID right now, you know, some of these meetings may have to be virtual. So, you know, those things tend to slip a few weeks here and there. So I, you know, that's our goal, but, you know, it could be middle of March, could be end of March that we're back to.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Yeah, that is good to know. I just, I guess I didn't want it, I didn't want the process to be rushed or, so I'm glad to hear that, you know, we're, we're going to take our time to be thorough and just vet, just like we normally would, right? So, and yeah, and this way, it also gives us time to also look at like the capital improvement plans like Sam has been presenting to us. And there's really no, you know, no interruption, no interference, none of that, right? That could potentially happen. Or nothing, no projects that would be slowed down because of this process, right? Councilman, is that your thinking?
Yeah, we definitely don't want to delay any other projects, you know, that, yeah, I agree with you on that. But, you know, like I said, we just want to make sure that we get the process going, have staff already go out for RFP and get these on the list.
Okay. Okay, well, yeah, those would be my only comments is just for us to, and I understand where you're coming from, Councilman Damien. So I hear you and, you know, I understand the logic. I think if I could just ask that we not rush the process and, you know, that we really take the time to vet and to really select some excellent firms. Because at the end of the day, these are the firms that help us with, you know, the capital improvement plan, the projects, and the important infrastructure projects in our city. And I also didn't want those to be impacted, you know, at all by this. So it sounds like, you know, that will not happen here. And even if we could do like a, I don't know, a two to three month timeframe just to keep things, you know, thorough and not rush anything, that would be my request in this.
Yeah, and I agree, I don't expect staff to rush it either. To make sure that they're vetting companies and they are getting us, you know, the best ones out there. You know, we're in no rush and I don't want staff to rush. I mean, I don't know, John, you said it takes about two to four weeks. You know, it could possibly take two months. I'm not, you know, I'm not giving staff a timeline and saying, hey, I want it by, you know, April 1st. I want to have these companies in there. No, I just want to give them direction to get these, you know, out there for RFP, get these companies, start vetting them, look at them, make sure that they bring us the best ones that we can work with. And then we start that process. I mean, if it takes us three, four months, I'm fine with that. I just, you know, I agree with you. I don't want to rush into it. And I want to make sure that we are vetting the best companies and the staff is vetting the best companies. But it's just something that we need to get the ball rolling on because we don't want to just keep one engineering firm. We want to have two or three on the RFP list that we can work with at any given time.
And then since we're on the topic, I do have some questions regarding our infrastructure. So, you know, it's, it's very important that we're obviously not, that we're being, you know, refining competitive bids, that we're also doing our due diligence. So I just want, and I know that this kind of, you know, was an issue at some point, but I want to know if we've lowered that $120,000 threshold for obtaining City Council approval?
I actually, I actually brought that up, Mayor. I actually had told Shannon to put it on the agenda to where we bring down to where it's $25,000 approval CEO. Anything over $24,999, anything over $25,000, bring it back to City Council for approval. The reason why I brought this is I've been reviewing a lot of the budget and a lot of the fees and so forth and so on. And honestly, not until we can get control of our finances. I think that maybe we should explore it to bring it back up to 120,000. But for now, I think that we should have the, anything that's over $25,000 should be brought back to council. So at least we're aware of the projects. You know, because if there's 10 projects at $120,000, we're talking about a million dollars and things that, you know, we're so caught up with all these things that we're doing that it may be projects that, you know, it may have been emailed to us and say, hey, these are projects that we're working on the pipeline, but we may have forgotten it. This way, you know what, we're looking at the projects that they're bringing. If it's over $25,000, then just let us know. It's not that we're going to deny it, but at least it's coming back to the council for approval. And now it's put in our hands and not in the CEO's hands.
Yeah. Mayor, council member, yes, if I could comment. So you have the current vendor, their contract allows task orders up to $125,000 as long as they're approved in the CIP budget to move ahead with my signature or more commonly the Public Works Director. And Councilmember Damien had asked me, questioned me about this and asked if we could implement that into the new contracts. And I said, that is at the council's pleasure. And he could, would be welcome to amend the motion tonight to include that or when it comes back to us in, you know, March or April. Those will be when you approve the contracts for the new firms and we could implement it at that time. Your choice.
Great. And then have we discontinued the practice of allowing contractors to initiate projects?
Yes, that's correct.
Great. Have we limited the total amount of on-call service contractors can charge in any one year without being pre-approved by the City Council?
So, um, I'm sorry, if you could repeat that again?
Have we limited the amount of on-call service contractor, on-call service contractor can charge in any one year without being pre-approved by the City Council?
Well, yeah, it's kind of a trick question because the on-call vendor is approved by the City Council. And as we discussed, their contract allows them to do task orders up to $125,000 as long as that project is approved in the CIP budget. So in reality, the City Council has approved the vendor, has approved their contract and has approved the project in the CIP. So those amounts are limited by the CIP. I think if the council wants to change or narrow that scope, then, you know, the suggestion that Councilmember Damien has made would be applicable for your consideration.
Yeah, so, and then so just to double check, if it's through the CIP, then they kind of, it's kind of that, that gives them the ability to charge that 120, right?
Yeah, so for example, the CIP project may have a street paving project. And if they do the design for the street paving project, which is approved by the CIP, then it would go to them as a task order. If it's under $120,000, the Public Works Director could approve it per their contract. If it's over $125,000, which is somewhat rare, then it would go to City Council.
Great. And then when we, when we do these things, are we requesting or will we start requesting requests for qualifications on the projects?
Well, currently, because we have just the one call vendor, you know, we're basically going off their contract. I think what we're doing and looking at tonight is a process that is going to, is basically exactly what you're talking about. We're going to do the request for qualifications. We're going to formulate a list of approved, pre-approved contractors, three to five approximately. And then city staff would have the choice to request prices or bids on them for that work as it comes up and depending on their availability. And then, you know, if the council wishes to proceed as described by Councilmember Damien, any of those, any of those task orders that come back that exceed the $24,999 would go to you as City Council for approval.
Great. And then so, Councilmember Damien, are you willing to amend your motion so that we can include that in now? And then especially that portion about the CIP, right? So that we can, so the City Council is more aware of what's going on?
Yes, Mayor, I'm willing to move the motion, amending it to bring it back to City Council for approval on any task order over $25,000.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make one suggestion? Or just if we could just give the instruction to staff and we can decide that. John, just really quickly, can you also, at the same time, when you do bring back those RFPs, can you also provide to council what the criteria will be for the Director of Public Works as to how they select the individuals? You know, the contractor one, contractor two, contractor three, that is best practice. So if we're doing this, please provide that documentation for council to review when we are also reviewing the RFPs for folks, please. Thank you.
Will do. So usually, it's an evaluation sheet that members of three evaluators or maybe four evaluators will read the proposal based on the scope of work just to make sure that they're responding to or understanding of the scope of work in the RFQ or RFP. And then they score them from zero to one in each task order. If council wish, we can bring these evaluation sheets, the scored evaluation sheets with it. Is that what you're referring to?
No, I'm sorry. I'm referring to the criteria that once we have two contractors or three, you know, on the approval list that council approves, what's going to be the criteria in which the Public Works Director uses to allocate the projects to one vendor, to another vendor and so forth? That is a best practice. So if we are adding more additional folks, you know, we need to add this type of policy that council understands and sees. You know, if we're taking away some discretionary or not necessarily discretionary, but we're taking away funding opportunities then for one vendor or another, I as a person, as a council, would like to also understand what the process that the director will then use to, you know, allocate these projects as we move forward for the CPIs and so forth.
I understand.
We could discuss that and with the director who couldn't be here tonight and we'll break, bring back that criteria with you at that, at that next meeting.
And if not, I'm mistaken, it's just, I mean, once we get more vendors, we're going to do obviously the request for qualifications, make sure that we're getting the most qualified to do, you know, said project. And of course, you know, we have that, we have to, I think there's like a bidding process as well, if I'm not mistaken. So just for the record, I'm not actually just asking. So I'm just making sure that city from now on is going to follow the state auditor's recommendations and that we start implementing these, you know, for the, for the, you know, for the sake of transparency and of course, competition. You know, we are striving to do things at City Hall and I think, so just for the record, these are not questions. I just came out of nowhere. These are questions. So by all means, also consider these when you are implementing these new, these new contracts.
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Avila, please.
And yes, and I agree with you and you made that comment before. I got a chance to, but you're right. It's a matter of transparency because that is question and on how are these contracts awarded without council approval? And like Mr. Damien said, it doesn't necessarily mean we are not going to approve these contracts. We just like to know ahead of time what we have coming ahead of us because we may miss an email. So it is important that we have these limits and that we're all aware of what's coming up and who's being awarded such contracts. And of course, they will be the best qualified. Again, it doesn't mean we're getting rid of anybody that we have here. If they're doing an excellent job, why wouldn't we want to keep them? So it's transparency very important and that way we're all aware of every single contract that's going out and the type of job that's being done. Thank you.
Yeah, and by all means, I know that our current contractor is great. I've met some of their staff and I know that they're very involved. And so, I mean, you know, it's nothing obviously against them, but it's important that we do follow recommendations when it comes to transparency and good practices.
And you're right, they're very involved. They give to the community a lot, to the churches. They were involved in the toy drive, in the food drive. They are very involved in, and we appreciate that.
Of course. So I think at this moment, if nobody asks any more comments, I think Mr. Councilmember Damien was about to make a motion.
Yeah, so I make a motion to approve item number nine with the amendment of any task orders over $25,000 to come back for approval.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
Any objections? No. So at this moment, that motion passes. And I believe, was that the last item that we were going to pull from the agenda? Yes, it was, right?
That's correct, Mayor.
Right. So at this moment, we move on to the successor agency. Give me one second. So at this moment, we, City Council acting as successor agency of the dissolved Community Development Commission. And there's a consent calendar. Is there any item that they want to pick from there? Or can we, is there a motion? So I'll make a motion.
Second.
Have the consent calendar. Any objections?
That's just a receive and file, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. No reports from officers. And then I believe at this moment, we move on to City Council, City Clerk and Staff Request and Communications. And so I believe I'm first on the list. And then the first one is how, I re, sorry, can't even talk today. But a discussion of directions to staff to bring back information on a city inclusionary housing ordinance and the process at a future study session. As we're well aware, housing is, you know, a vital, vital part of everybody's lives, of course, because we have to live somewhere. You know, we know that, you know, Baldwin Park has had a high homeless count in the past. And this year, I believe the count's not happening, so we're not going to be too sure of what's going on. We know that the COVID pandemic is affecting it negatively and it's leaving people without homes, without jobs, without the ability to afford food. As we develop Baldwin Park, I want to make sure that people who actually live in Baldwin Park get to see those developments. And I believe that one of the most important things we can do is make sure that housing is attainable and affordable for the people who live here. And so with that being said, I want to make a motion to direct city staff to bring back information on a city inclusionary housing ordinance and in the process at a future study session. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any objections? No? So that motion passes and?
Mayor, Mayor, excuse me, if I could just comment too. Thank you very much. And staff will follow through on that. And as you know, we are working on the housing element. An inclusionary housing ordinance will go along, along with that process. But I also did send everybody an email that we were awarded Measure H funds for the first phase of an inclusionary housing ordinance study. So that's really good news. We'll be able to move ahead that, with that, with the grant funding for Measure H.
Yeah, of course. And so, you know, I look forward to that. I know that we have that meeting with the Planning Commission next week. And I look forward to that as well and talk about our housing element. And I did want to make another, another, start another discussion, of course, around housing and programs and making sure that we're working with our elected officials at higher ranks. You know, we have a state senator and a state assemblywoman who come from Baldwin Park. And of course, we have Congresswoman Grace Napole Dona representing us in DC. And of course, we have Congresswoman Grace Napole Dona representing us in, in DC, and I think that it's important that we reach out to them and, and start making, uh, communication and partnerships to make sure that we are doing everything we can together to take care of our, our community and everybody around us. Of course, housing is another issue, and, and as many of you have seen or have not seen, the, the new relief plan from, from, from Congress did not involve any direct aid, which is an issue, because that's what we used to fund rent relief and business grants, and of course, meals on wheels. So it is important that we, we push as much as we can, find every avenue possible to, to bring these services and, and keep everybody afloat during these hard times. So I, I want to make a motion that we direct staff to, to write a letter to our, 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 our elected officials at, at higher levels, and, and let them know that we are also here, not only asking for, for help, but here offering help. Another issue is the vaccines, of course. You know, as you know, the president and Congress had a, a, a major goal that they didn't reach, and I think at this point, state of California has only vaccinated about one percent. And by all means, we want to be able to help them so that they can help us. And, and so, I don't know if any councilmembers have any comments or, or concerns regarding this motion, and, but if you do, you, you can let me know now before I make the motion. So I'll make a motion to direct staff to reach out to our, our city, not our city, our elected officials at higher levels to look for partnerships and grants, and of course, also look for philanthropic and private partnerships to make sure that we are seeking every avenue out in the efforts to take care of our community during these times. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any objections? No. I believe that motion will be okay. I believe next is Councilmember Danny Damian.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mine is a City Council discussion and direction to staff to send out an RFP for a new auditing, auditing firm for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and future years. The current auditing firm that we've had, we've had it since twenty sixteen, and it's best common practice to change it out every four to five years. That was number one, the four to five years, but my biggest concern about this auditing firm, and I don't know who they are, is the fact that our state audit controllers report came out, and if we're paying this auditing firm to audit our books and to make sure that when we get audited by the state, we have a pretty good report, not a negative report the way this one came out, then I think it's time that we start to reevaluate the auditing firm that we're paying to review our books. So that's the reason why I'm requesting direction for staff to send out for RFP to, uh, look for a new auditing firm.
Great. Is there a second for Councilmember Damian, or any questions or concerns? I'll second it. Is there any objections? No, so I believe that, at this moment, Councilmember's motion, Councilmember Damian's motion passes, and I believe, uh, Councilmember Monica Garcia had a request as well.
Hold on. Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, uh, Councilmember Garcia is having a, just got kicked off. Shannon, maybe we can go back to her item, and I'm happy to discuss while we get her back on. If Shannon, we could work with her to get back on, because she's having some trouble logging back on.
Oh, yeah, of course.
One second, please, here. Perfect. Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmember Garcia just asked that we just continue the item until the, the next meeting. Not to delay this.
Sure, that's fine, we can do that. And I believe, uh, Councilmember Hernandez had a request.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you know, as you've mentioned earlier in your comments, you know, we need to make sure that we're advocating, you know, for all the resources available for our city, uh, you know, with the recent mega pods that are happening throughout LA County, and even, and even some of the satellite locations, I, I just want to make sure that, again, as you mentioned earlier, that our local elected officials, you know, and more importantly, the Chair of, of the LA County, or, you know, and our supervisor, Solis, understands that, you know, one is, you know, we have a need, but more importantly, that, you know, we have, we've had some successful partnerships, you know, with their office and with other vendors. You know, we're, when we brought in the, the COVID testing early on, late, early last, mid last year, and then the recent ones that we have with a partnership with the school districts, and again, the food distributions that we recently had. These are all examples of not only, you know, meeting the need that, or meeting some of the need in our community, but more importantly, showcasing the partnership that we have. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we collectively, you know, sent a letter to our supervisor, making, making them aware that, you know, we are here not only just for assistance, but we're also here to be a supportive, in a supportive role, whether that's having one of our facilities as a vaccination site, because as you can imagine, you know, individuals, you know, people of color, you know, single-family households, seniors don't have necessarily the means to be, you know, going even sometimes two, three miles away. So we just want to make sure that, you know, working in partnership with our supervisor, we send a collective, uh, letter, and that would be my motion.
Yeah, and so before, I, I do want to add, you know, so, and I, and I, and Manny, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we've actually been doing this before the pods, right? So city staff has been working diligently. I, I think they've, they, they reached out to the county, and then from the county, they were directed at the Department of Public Health, and I do believe that, that the city is currently working on a vaccination site. Did you want to give us an update, uh, Manny?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Shannon and I have been reaching out to the Department of Public Health, and we have put in a request to host a site. They have not agreed to have a site in Baldwin Park yet, but we definitely have a very good track record, and hopefully, our past track record in showing our capacity that they will host a site here in the city of Baldwin Park. Shannon, would you like to say anything as well?
Thanks, I think you covered it. We're, we're keeping communication open with them. I, I know they had mentioned that these pods are intended for healthcare workers, and when they get more into the smaller communities, they did intend to open up some smaller sites, but we will continue to work with them and keep in contact with them and push for this.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, and I, and I am aware of that, and I also, you know, quite aware that I know he, both staff circle back with Core, because they also know that they reached out to Councilmember Garcia back in December, or November, if I remember correctly, and Manny, you guys would know that. So I'm happy that, that loop is being closed on, on all parts, right? Because, you know, sometimes they reach out directly to a council member or others, and then also, we have staff working on multiple levels. So again, that's why it's very important for us to just send a, a letter of partnership outlining all the things that we've done in the past, and also, more importantly, making them aware of, you know, the community need, but also the partnerships that we've been able to accomplish, you know, over the last couple months. Thank you, and that's my motion.
Yeah, by all means, and, and, you know, make, that we make sure that we think, Chair Solis, I think Soli, Chair Solis has been, you know, incredibly helpful, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm grateful for the, all the opportunities we've had, we've, we've done a, I think the city of Ballin Park has done an amazing job at, at offering resources to our community, and, you know, and now in partnership with our, with our school district, you know, we've, we've been doing a lot. So, yeah, by all means, we can send her a letter, let her know that we're, we're still here. I'll second. Does anybody have any objections? Great.
No, Mayor, and I just want to add again, Manny Carillo and his staff has been at the forefront of all these accomplishments when we had the first COVID testing site. I know your, your staff was there, yours, and Public Works worked around the clock, the clock to make sure these, these programs went well, and you continue to, to reach out and bring new services here to the community along with our partners. So again, thank you, Manny, to you and your staff, and Public Works, the Police Department, everybody has been doing their part to make sure that, that we provide services, and of course, you continue to look for more services, because it is very important, like Mayor Estrada said, Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Damian, Ms. Garcia, we're all, we all feel the same. We, we need to give as much as possible to our community, and we need those partnerships with Hill of Solis, for example, our counts, our Assemblywoman, our Senators, so working together, we can accomplish more, like the saying says, together we can do more. So thank you again, Mr. Carillo.
Yeah, and by all means, you know, I, I think they deserve a highlight. I know Parks and Recs has been doing an amazing job. They, they've been taking care of the logistics, of course, along with the Public Works, and I know that sometimes the BPPD and, and, and their team also assists. So by all means, you know, the city staff at Ballin Park is doing a great job. I know sometimes I pass by and, and things are running smoothly. I know, I see, uh, I, I think I was there with, with Manny and his crew at, at one of the first food drives, I think in December, and, and everything was so smooth, it was great. So by all means, you know, you guys are doing a great job, and, and of course, not only city staff, uh, not only city council, but of course, I'm sure our residents are very appreciative of everything where you guys are, have been able to successfully do.
Thank you. Staff, if we could let Councilmember Garcia back in, I think she's ready.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to close in honor of one more additional person. I do apologize.
Great. Well, before you do, is Councilmember Garcia going to still talk about her request, or are we just moving that over? She's already on.
Okay, Mayor, sorry about that. I, I'm not sure what was going on with my phone. I couldn't text, I couldn't do anything, so I apologize. But I wanted to chime in. I was hearing the conversation about sending a letter to Supervisor Solis's office, and I wholeheartedly support that. And in the letter, I, I think we can absolutely point to previous partnerships, first with Davida at the beginning of the pandemic. I think it was Davida, well, the, sorry, the county vendor that we partnered with for the very first test site. And in addition to that, the core, you know, the core site, plus the two additional sites that we have, that Manny Carillo has been working with the school district to launch and, and to manage. If we can point to all of that in the letter, because it will show that we are not only willing, but we're able, we have the capacity to provide, you know, the site, the operation plan. It's, it's, it's already been done, and in addition to that, we can also reference a past event, which was the flu vaccination event. It was a distribution event years ago, like two thousand and ten. So I think all of this will show that we have the capacity here in our city, and it's much needed. You know, what, something that we did very well at the beginning of this pandemic was we were very proactive. We didn't wait for somebody to come knock at our door. We were knocking at doors, and we were saying, what can we do to provide resources to our community? And we've got to do the same thing in this with the vaccination satellite. And I do want to applaud all of our staff, you know, from Shannon to Manny Carillo, to Recreation and Community Services, and all the departments that have just, you know, been all hands on deck in, in, in the various ways that we have responded during this pandemic. But I especially want to give kudos to Manny Carillo, Maria Moreno, and all of the Recreation and Community Services staff, because back in December, Core approached us along with the county, thinking that we might have a, a pop-up test site for a couple weeks. But I really do believe it's because of our staff that they are so diligent, and they are so responsive. And they were able to, you know, provide a very seamless operation for Core. And so that was extended for additional two weeks, if I, if I understand correctly. I know it was extended. So I want to really say thank you to Manny Carillo and to the, you know, that department for just being so responsive. I know it's late, but I just wanted to, you know, make sure to chime in on that, because it is so important, and especially as we get in line. And we advocate for our residents here in Ballin Park, our seniors. It's so important that we are proactive, and that I know that our staff has been talking with the county and with the existing partners and vendors, and we are covering all angles, and I would just encourage us to continue to do that at every opportunity because of the limited supply, and, and if we look back to the beginning of the pandemic, and we think about the test sites, and how restrictive that operation was, but we were able to make it available for our residents. So let's think of how we can do that, you know, working with the county. I, I like the idea that Councilmember Paul Hernandez has proposed here. Let's get ahead of it, let's be proactive. Let me see, I think that's really all I wanted to, to say, and in the letter, we should absolutely point to, again, you know, the, the past events that do show not only our willingness, but our capacity. So that's, that's what I wanted to, to share on that.
Of course, and I'm, I'm sure city staff will be sure to mention all that. I know, uh, the, the city has a long rap sheet, so, you know, that's going to be a lengthy letter. At this point.
Mayor, Mayor, this is your interpreter. The Spanish station has gone down. I've been asking for some help, maybe from the staff to reconnect.
Oh, sorry about that. I believe maybe Mark can help you out. Can we check on the, on the Spanish station?
See what I can do.
Okay, great. Thanks, thanks, David. I do believe that we are going to adjourn the meeting at this point.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I know, sorry.
Yes, before we end the meeting, I want to address Ms. Alicia that spoke about the trash out. If we can have our, our Public Works Department to look into that. I know we, we have a new maintenance person. So we can check out those areas that she's talking about and make sure that, you know, these areas are cleaned out and look into what's going on, not necessarily him, what's going on with, with the, the homeless, to see what we can do. I know there is trash. I have seen it in different places. So let's look into that to make sure that our city is looking clean, please. Thank you.
Great, great. Yeah, and, and of course, also the graffiti. I know, uh, Public Works has been out there keeping up and, and working as fast as possible. So, you know, I know Public Works is out there making an effort, so by all means, thank you.
They are, and all we need to do is call them, and they're out there immediately. They're really, the graffiti people are really, really good. Thank you.
Mayor, there is one more person I would like to close on behalf of. Really quick, her name is Maria de la Paz Surena, and she was born in March fifteen nineteen seventy-nine. I'm sorry, she was born on January twenty-fourth nineteen twenty-six, and she passed on January tenth of this year. So, long, longtime resident and raised a family here, and we want to offer our condolences and our prayers to her family on her passing.
Yes, of course, and I, and I believe, uh, Councilmember Hernandez wanted, was that the same person? Okay, sorry about that. And of course, you know, the council, obviously, losing someone is, is never easy, and we send our condolences out to all those families. At this moment, I do move to adjourn this meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any objections? No objections. Meeting is adjourned. And at this point, I do move to open up the Ballin Park Housing Authority, the regular meeting. Calling into order. City Clerk, can I get a roll call? The city clerk here. She is here. Or maybe Chief Deputy City Clerk, can you do roll call?
I am here, I'm sorry, I was muted.
No worries.
I apologize. Yes, Mayor Estrada.
Here.
Mayor Protemavila.
Here.
Councilmember Damian.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Is there any public communications for this meeting?
No, I believe none.
Great. So at this moment, I, I make a motion to move a, to content, to pass consent calendar. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? No. Motion passes. At this moment, I move to adjourn this meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? No. This meeting is adjourned. At this moment, I move to open the Finance Authority regular meeting. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor Estrada.
Here.
Mayor Protemavila.
Here.
Councilmember Damian.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember. Okay, Councilmember Hernandez.
Present.
Great, thank you. Uh, any public communications for this meeting? Great, thank you. Any public communications for this meeting?
None.
And at this moment, I make a motion to pass content calendar. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? No, motion passes. At this moment, I move to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? A meeting, uh, so we adjourned that meeting and I believe at this point, Shannon, Robert, I believe at this point, we're going back into closed session. Is that correct?
Yes, we'll need to re-adjourn into closed session. We do have a new Zoom meeting I sent out to everybody a little bit ago. So we'll need to log into that. And then after that, we'll log back into this regular seven o'clock meeting to report out if anything.
Great. Mr. Mayor and City Council, I believe you adjourned the regular meeting. Did you do that? Was that the regular meeting that you adjourned?
I believe we, I believe we did.
Okay, so we can't adjourn the regular meeting because we have to go in closed session, come back into the regular meeting and report out.
Oh, great. Is there any motion I need to make?
So you need to make a motion to reopen the regular meeting.
Great. Motion to reopen the meeting. The regular meeting. Thank you. Any objections? No? All right. So at this moment, I, I believe we reopened the, the regular meeting. And I believe at this point, we are moving now into closed session. Is that correct, Robert?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. So I will see you all in the next Zoom.
Ms. Marlin. Hello. Marlin. Are you gone? Mark. Hmm.
Henry, morning. And we are still recording.
Is Ms. Marlin gone?
Yeah, she is gone. We are still recording.
Hello.
Nuru is dead away.
Oh. I didn't pay attention if, if, uh... At the beginning, Paul calls in memory of April's dad.
I think we are, we are still recording right now.
Oh.
Yeah, we're still online. We need to keep...
Yeah. They really are taking it serious.
...
嗯
好
嗯
嗯
This is fun. Who's left up?
Top city managers that I believe will apply this, uh, people would be very good and qualified for the position, though at least two or three.
Who's ma- who's making noise? Is that you, Lulu?
Marie, it's you.
Hey, Marie, you're making good noise.
Hi, Marie.
Hello.
It's you.
Who is it?
Hi, Marie.
Who is it?
That's Shannon and Robert and Alejandra.
Oh, hello there, everybody.
You're still up with us? That's awesome.
I- I heard her voice and I- and I- I- I was totally thinking we were gonna go backwards. I was like, nobody. And I was like, oh, we have all- we have all the staff waiting for us.
Or Lulu's still awake, too.
I'm waiting for you guys because I was wondering if, uh, they requested, uh, you know how April's father passed away?
Oh.
Did they request, uh, did, um, Paul Hernandez do Mr. Rojo- Rojas?
Did he close our item recall?
Yes, he did.
I believe he did.
Okay. I wasn't sure, so I kept feeling guilty.
Great. Um, should we wait for the other council members? I believe we have four of them, so we can move through.
Uh, yeah, we can go ahead. Monica said to drop off.
Great. And then, uh, Robert, is there anything to report?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council considered multiple items in closed session. No final action was taken. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And so at this moment, I, uh, move to return the speaker. Can I get a second?
Second. And thank you, Chief Lopez, for still being here with us.
Yeah, of course. Thanks, thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Great. And then, any objections? I'm sure none. None? Great. So this meeting is adjourned.
We'll have to remember that.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
And council.